Looks like we're on, so I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Wednesday, April ninth, 2025, Amendment Select Board Meeting. And so everyone knows this meeting is being recorded. So if you could please stand in front of me. I'd like to lead this line as the United States of America. The Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To mention this, being this hybrid, we have three select board members here in person, and Jason Cooter is joining us remotely. Check all the boxes. Excellent. Okay, so first up, we have citizen statements and petitions. I don't see any hands. So then, we had a hearing at six thirty-five, so we will wait for that. So I think we can work away through some of the other things, such as the meeting minutes.
We have the December eighteenth and the January fifteenth minutes, which I previously described earlier.
So I did notice a typo, I think possibly the fifteenth tie and bond tie was spelled in one of them. So it was T I G H E. So there is one, at least one instance where I saw it misspelled.
I had a question on the fifteenth, just regarding the motion for the town administrator to interact with public safety. So I wasn't sure what that meant. I don't know if we can get more specificity to what that. I think it might have been coordinating journey.
Discussion really here, but you're right. It was the same process where I kind of had to loop a bit.
It was interacting with public safety, coordinate, other way, sign change, just things like that.
I think, well, I think it was relative to the Vanderbalts.
Yeah.
Right, but I think, right, I think if it were specified in that item, since people might not be reading that, yes, we had to loop through.
Can I suggest we just push both approval of those meeting minutes to the next meeting?
I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, let's end based on these documents. So one fifteen, if I say they're not being allowed to interact with safety, yeah, that's not, that's a script that should be for.
All right, and then, so we will revisit these minutes next time, as well as the other additional meeting minutes, which is a few of them are very intense budget season. Still have one more minutes.
Yeah, so I can go through safety. Sure. So community events, parade for the month, you baseball and more likely softball on April twenty-sixth. I spoke with the police chief, this is something that in his twenty-plus years with the town, that's done, and he's very familiar with. And they've coordinated together with Public Safety to orchestrate to do that. The cultural council, scavenger, I don't think, we have Julian Olaf here from Cultural Councils, if you'd like to come out and talk a little bit about it.
I spoke to the police chief today, and he did the UHBO. And at that same time, that same day, Alliance Club is also having their boot drive. Oh, but he was fine with it. And he said he needed some extra minutes, how long to take care of it, he would be fine doing it, and that he was fine with the. Since I, when I came here previously, you kind of changed the route a little bit, and now just, well, we're going to do just the village. It's going to be a walking of the village, of different sites in the village, you're going to be walking. You have some, we have six outer ones that are extra points.
Okay.
But it's going to be basically with the village. And we'll have people use club to talk, so that way they can talk on the class. And it's still the same day with the rain date of May thirty-first, because we're going to have the rain date of June seventh, but that's also the progressive yacht sale, so we moved it to the thirty-first. Where it stands right now.
I talked to the police chief, who's on as well, and there is built in within the police department budget, a special events spacer, which would be within overtime, which has not been utilized within fiscal twenty twenty-five. So we'll tap into that a little bit for this day. We'll get dual community events. Business block, that's basically.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Can you guys share the locations for me?
The only one that knows?
Yes, now I know too much, because I attended the cultural council. But so I will not, I will not participate in a competitive way, but maybe I will still participate in a, you know, to enjoy myself.
I know, but there's always that day, so we won't have to postpone it, because I think so too. I think it's going to be fun stuff.
Thank you so much. Nice. Right, and so I think, yeah, so you mentioned the, that overall, was there any more left that one?
Yes, so that's required police chief approval, so this is something that's also happened in many years past, and police chief has treaties comfortable with both happening on Sunday, especially with the nature of this.
Okay. All right, so now we have made it past six thirty-five, so we would be, I would be looking for a motion to continue the hearing.
I move to continue the six thirty-five public hearing to review the renewal of cable television license for Verizon.
Second.
And we'll do roll call vote. Who goes I?
Shana I.
Cooter, I.
So this is a public hearing, which we initially had to talk about the specifics of in December, I guess so, or maybe early January.
Hopefully it was in some of the minutes that we were looking at just recently.
So this has gone back and forth with Verizon England, as they had to turn over in their council office, and a council that we used, William Sullivan, to go through this. So this has been vetted more times than any things that we deal with. So this is the cable license for, it was initially signed in twenty nineteen, and this is a renewal of it for, I believe, five years, dated four nine, and gone through by our council, both our special council and our town council. There's not a lot of approval thereafter, and it's provided payment for the public pay for the public education governmental channels, and then will sort of vet it to us on a yearly basis from Verizon for each licensee in town. So it's thirty-three pages and very dense, and has been vetted by multiple council members.
So we don't need to read that out loud today.
Can you just summarize what this license is intended to do again? Again, in layman's terms.
This license allows Verizon to operate within town.
Yep.
And remits to the town a modest payment for that, and then also supports the public access cable that is available in town. And conforms with federal laws that. So yeah, that's what I made my very little way of room.
And then, since this is a public hearing, I guess I would be, first of all, any more questions for the board?
No, I have some.
Jason?
Nope, I'm good.
And then I will open it up to public comment or questions. Can you stop live? I do not see any hands raised online or even in a room, so I would be looking for a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the six thirty-five P M. public hearing to review the renewal of the cable television license for Verizon.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Who goes I?
Shana I. Cooter, I.
Right, so then, next up, we would be, I would be looking for a motion to approve or decline the renewal of the cable television license.
I move to approve the renewal of the cable television license for Verizon.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, we'll do a roll call vote. Who goes I?
Shana I.
Cooter, I.
All right, thank you, so that has passed. All right. Fast public hearing.
Yeah.
It was about two months and then a couple minutes, yeah, so fast or slow, depending on how to measure it. Okay, all right, so then, should we move forward to second? Okay, so this is a change in hours application for Showtime Entertainment, so Jeremy, if you could tell us about that.
Yeah, we have, we have this here to join us for that. So just to set the table, so right now, Showtime has a, has a all alcohol pouring license until one A M. Their entertainment license initially was approved until one A M. as well, and then that went through many legal iterations, and right now it is ambiguous to both parties when the entertainer license actually ends. So functionally, they end at one A M., because that's when the pouring license ends, or the alcohol license. In conversation with our council and our licensing and their licensing expert in-house, it is not tied together when entertainment license and pouring license necessarily end. Functionally, that's what's been happening there, but that is not necessary. There are other entities in town that have their, right down the road, that have their entertainment license up to two A M. and their pouring license up to one A M. The functional benefit of that for the town is that you have folks who, you know, you can kind of, I hear them out the door, or, okay, Chris talked about this a little bit more, but you're not, you know, serving someone a drink and getting them out the way, you know, there's an offer of time. So what Showtime is looking for is the similar consideration as to their neighbors, to be able to keep, they're looking to have no change in their A B C C pouring ability until one A M., but to just stay open until two A M. This, we have it as a change in hours on the application, but really, I think it's asking for a definition of hours, because after the initial license was drawn out, subsequent licenses and subsequent rules did not have a definitive hour as to which they should end. So like I said, it's functioning as a one A M. end, and they're asking to have it be defined as a, as a two A M. close.
This is really clarification.
That's, that's how, that's how I am seeing this, because there is, there is no, I want it to build the license says one A M. or changes to two A M., it's not there. It is codifying what they're asking to do. Is that any precision?
Perfect. We just, we, when we close at one o'clock, we'd like to give, when we start pouring at one o'clock, we'd like to give everybody the opportunity to finish up, not rush out the door, be able to collect their thoughts, get a ride if they need to, you know, and not force them to go hurry, hurry, let's go, let's go. That's why we're kind of hoping that the two o'clock hour would work out. We know the end zone down the street, I've talked to those guys. They, they have similar thoughts about not having to rush people, let them finish, and let them make good decisions, help them, you know, if they're not in a good spot, find a ride, just takes a little bit of time. So we're just thinking about safety for everybody, that's our.
Thank you, and actually, if you don't mind, just for the purpose of the recording, could you just say your name?
My name is Chris.
Great, thank you.
Can you talk to Chief Kersey about this as well?
I talked to the chief a week or two ago, he didn't seem to have any issues with that. We've been, we've been good, we've had no issues down there whatsoever, everything's been very quiet, we take it very seriously, hope it remains like that.
Wait, I see, and do you see a hand from Chief Kersey?
Good evening, yeah, we've been on a phone basis probably like once a month, he's been a great business owner to work with, no problems, great communications, if it helps him out, you know, safety wise, getting people out there safely, I'm all in favor for it, so I have no issues with it whatsoever.
Any questions from the board?
Just want to confirm, you said that maybe it's the end zone or not, but another establishment has a similar end time for two A M., so there's not precedent setting that way.
Yeah, the end zone has a two A M. And one A M. and on their pouring licenses, so they are seeming to replicate similar establishments.
We're not changing the pouring licenses, that's, that was my first question when I started, I'm like, oh.
That's right, we'll leave that alone, just a time, it's just a time thing, we're trying to get control.
And what's the, do you know what the operating hours of the driving is?
It's until one A M.
Till one?
So then, I would be, I would accept a motion with respect to the changing hours.
I move to approve the Showtime Entertainment change of hours to the.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, roll call vote. Who goes I?
Cooter, I.
Thank you very much, thank you for joining us. So next up is a collectible license, a point term.
Yeah, so when this first came in, I put it, it's all the junk collector license, but that's, that's the term of the mess term, also that's what we use. So at fifteen, so this is essentially a small antique business, a small vintage business, and this is a application that has been filed since two thousand and one, what's the name, two thousand and nine, something like that? And just the timing of this this year, I believe this person's husband passed away recently and didn't get on a yearly renewal. So this is something typically would have done the yearly renewal, but this year.
Any questions, or I'd be open to a motion?
I move to approve the junk collector license.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Who goes I?
Shana I.
Cooter, I.
Great, thank you. All right, so then, next up, we have item nine, General Bylaw Review Committee update. Do we have?
We have the vice chair.
I see, I see a T M., I can't see a name, is that?
That is Tom Maroli.
That is Tom, okay, sorry, yes, or the interface is blocking the name, so, okay, so we have Tom and here, great. So did anything before we invite them?
Yeah, so we've got, we've got, I'm going to go through this, but we've got a number of town meeting warrant articles that we've discussed before, so we've got change of officials, change of gender, neutral language, election date, and electronic voting, and then anything else that maybe we'd like to bring up.
Yeah, and.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I was going to say, I sent you both language, that the, the actual language for the bylaw changes, and as well as I sent what I feel would be articles that I have a decent, you know, and the moderator would see as encompassing the scope of what the bylaw changes would, would.
You sure that's what the moderator thinks?
What was that?
You sure that's what the moderator thinks?
I, I'm, I'm fairly certain, but.
You've been in contact.
Yeah, but no, so I sent, because I asked if you wanted motions or articles, so I sent the article language as well as the language, the actual bylaw change language as approved by the committee. So these, these four articles, we discuss as a committee at length, we feel like these four would be a good place to start, because they're fairly simple, not large changes. And again, like in the instance of electronic voting, it's something we already do, it's just a matter of codifying it. In the instance of the gender neutral, it's basically more or less to, because so many of our bylaws refer to he or him, just to be, make it more gender neutral, to be reflective of both the time and the fact that anybody can hold these positions. In the instance of the town election date, it's because the change in town meeting date would mean that an election could happen before the town meeting, and we feel as though if there, there's some sort of, for instance, like exclusion or override vote, that's contingent on a town meeting vote as well, it's important to have that at the town meeting, because that impacts how people might vote. In the instance of removing section three dot ten, that's because it's, we felt as though it was a redundancy, because there's applicable ethics laws at the state level that govern this thing. And we looked around in several of the towns and couldn't find anything comparable to what we have, to any town in the area. And I was very, I, it, I want to add anything.
Anything changed?
This is just their, the language. Tom had shared specific language.
My, my only input was that when section three dot ten was discussed last meeting, I believe Mike Maroli felt that this was premature for May and was wanting to, and because there may be other very active and contentious items for May, we may want to push that off.
That's my recollection as well, I think we left it as we wanted to see the language people.
Yeah, so the line is just remove.
Yeah, I also share concerns.
For, for a record period, our town said no person holding elected office within the town should be eligible for employment for a period of one calendar year following their last day of holding office, nothing contained, shall the select board authorize the town clerk on additional services? And then, take such action, there too. So the takeaway of the article is that anyone holding elected office cannot hold, cannot employ within the town following one year of their last day.
Yeah, and like reading between the lines a little bit, I kind of understand where it's coming from, like you don't want to be able to hire yourself, you know, basically, or get yourself in a position where that could happen, but I think it has unintended consequences as written, but I don't know if we can see that.
The, the, the particular case that drove our reviewing this bylaw is Adam Tetralt. We were not able to hire him to trap beavers, because he was on an elected board, and we could find no one else interested in doing it. But if this would generate a lot of heat, we can def, there is nothing pressing, we can afford to wait another six, five, six months to bring this before the town.
I think, I think there's nuance we can provide in the article saying, you know, employment under the perdu which their office had, or.
Exactly. Wouldn't this be something where we describe the intent to town council, let them craft the language, rather than trying to reword it ourselves? I mean, the, I think we all understand the intent.
The intent is that if the board doesn't create an assistant town administrator, that kind of, to be, yeah, the highest select room to be in that position that you as a board created.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But, right, but I think, right, elected official is too broad, so it means that anyone elected to say.
Yeah.
School committee or library trustees would not, or like.
Right, there's all.
Or commission, so like, and so it would be potentially nice for the town to be able to widen the applicant pool.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the bylaw is heavy handed to be moved until you get its entire base, but.
Okay, so right, we need a scalpel, yes.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, my own, my own, my own feeling is that, you know, there are, there are ethics laws at the state level that do govern this sort of thing, that, you know, our bylaws don't supersede regardless. And so that's, that's my feeling, that if there's a case where the, you know, hiring someone would be unethical, then there's already laws on the books that prevent that.
There are very definite time limits built in where you cannot, as a, if you are a town official, you cannot be compensated within a certain period of time, and for some actions, you have a lifetime exclusion. For example, you can't lobby on behalf of a, of an outside company, if you were involved in adjudicating that particular business.
I think we've got better solutions if we hold off on this one.
Yeah, I mean.
We even refer to, for to reference M G F, and trying to craft something in our own lexicon to say, this is what we, this is what we're trying to do. If there are things that are, if other towns don't, also, other towns don't seem to have issue here, I feel like this was put in for a very specific use case many, many years ago, that's my sense.
I mean, if the, if the narrow definition is we do whatever justice has to do.
Right, right. I think it's well intended, I just think that, yeah, maybe we should rethink. What we need, simple, I'm big on simplification.
So I think we're ready for a question, does this get brought forward in May, or do we table it?
Yes, so, I mean, so is the question, then, do we want to remove it from the warrant? Is that?
This is one of those bold items, I do like a consent counter in the warrants, right, Jeremy?
Yeah, and I think we're.
Yeah.
Now, so what are our options, right? I mean, so it seems like people are not ready to put forward with this, so.
I just want to make sure.
Over it, we could, or we could vote to remove it.
So it is sponsored by the General Bylaw Review Committee.
Ah, okay, so they would meet.
So I would.
Hold, hold on, though. My understanding is the General Bylaw Review Committee is pushing this through.
As a select board sponsor, I.
Yeah, through, underneath the select board, I didn't think we could independently bring things to the warrant.
That was my expectation also.
We're advisory.
Yeah. I, I was highlighted on my chart.
Recommend passing over, just plan on passing over.
So, sorry, your, sorry, your recommendation might be to sit in the warrant, but pass it over at the meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, that might be, that would be a way to bring the public's attention to the question, so that there can be more discussion and perhaps more input for this, so I, I think that's a good idea, whereas if we remove it altogether, we may find ourselves back in the same, same position of knowing, not knowing that people are objecting to it until the last.
And it gives us more chance to make sure people understand there is a general bylaw review committee that's actively working on bylaws, as evidenced by four sitting here, and it's not just, you know, it's serious work to the point where if we're not ready, we're going to pass over, you know?
Right, so are you fine with the other three articles that we've proposed?
Speaking for myself, yes.
I think Tom has to wait until we get to the review of the warrant article, keep it on the agenda and the proper, you know.
Got, got you, got you, got you.
And we've got.
No, I'm kidding.
Tom, yes.
I'm good with the other three.
Okay.
Okay, and then, so at the annual town meeting, will somebody be available to answer questions from the committee? Yes, I see Carl waving, and I'm right, I know that Tom, you will be there, but I think you'll be busy.
I will defer, I will defer to Carl to answer any questions, though, I must. I I will defer, I will defer to Carl to answer any questions, though I I must must emphasize that the moderator is also part of the town meeting body, so the moderator gets opinions as well and.
Something I would expect to do with the moderator and the town administrators to work out the scripting of who is making a motion, whether it's a member of the select board or myself on behalf of the GBRC. And I will have created the talking points, the 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 opening discussion points that would hopefully get put on a PowerPoint slide on the big screen.
Um. Think that does help the general public process, but I know also Jeremy the literature as well that will help uh get the message out, but I think all of those sound helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I also want to clarify um one last thing, like one thing I've, I've been working on, I've shared um Jeremy on as well as other people, it's kind of like a chart of which, whether boards or committees are classified as legislative or judicial or advisory or executive, where the powers are derived from, that sort of thing, so. Um I expect to discuss that at some point in the future as well.
Great, great, thank you. Right, any other questions for the General Bylaw Review Committee? Right, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
I'm now going to switch to my Conservation Commission chair hat for agenda item number oh ten.
Great, yes. All right, so then uh we will uh talk about the annual town meeting, which um this is right, potentially the last week finalizing tonight, Jeremy. So that that's the plan. So, you know, we've talked about it a lot, but this is our chance to uh adjust wording as we so uh Jeremy, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, thank you. So we've gone through a lot of this before and a lot of this is um kind of a yearby, but let's go through it one by one. Uh my anticipation would be, uh I'm going to go through the whole thing, um say what I think we should uh the body should continue to to discuss thereafter, um and anything that I pass over that you want further discussion on, let me know. Um there's a little dash C A here, um so that's something that I owe discussion to the moderator on on our consent agenda. So there will be um uh similar to to town meeting in the fall, a consent agenda that gets through stuff. I've tried to condemn, so I did, first of all, Article One, any motion to increase monetary items would be out of order unless it's a financial. So um you know, you have to have a ballot, but it, and then we go through consent agenda items. Then into budget, and there's a few consent agenda items after the budget, but I want to keep the budget things, Jeremy. Um so let's, let's go through these. So to see if the town vote to fix salaries and compensation of elected officials. Um so this is the stipends that some elected boards have and Town Clerk. Um Town Clerk has the cost of living adjustment consistently with the rest of town. Uh raise appropriate um pay those required here. We throw us a transposition error in the fall on a solar bill that we need to pay now. It's, it was at five hundred and fifty seven dollars with something in that magnitude. It's a bill. Um chapter ninety, um so we get money, this is accepting money. Uh and there's a one point five uh billion dollar bond bill that increases our allocation to chapter ninety up to four hundred something million dollars should it pass the legislature. Um so that's what the um approval would be should the bond pass.
Our allocation's four fifty K, right?
Specifically, it's two seventy five.
Right, you said four fifty, four fifty million, I'm like.
Uh yeah, uh so article five, I have struck out here, so uh this is something I haven't struck out just so we can talk about why it's struck out. Um so previously, there were uh funds received within National Opioid Settlement Fund and then appropriated to the police uh general fund to be able to expand. Last year, uh the budget allows for municipalities to expend directly from the National Opioid Settlement Fund without further appropriation. So it's just anglicated on expenses, we're spending on the same sort of things, um which hasn't been a lot yet. Um but we have the same restriction on expenditures, we just don't need the further appropriations, so we're going to stress.
Except except will that involve renumbering?
Yes. But I wanted to show the. So the particle six is something that we passed at the fall town meeting um that for fiscal twenty five, so I don't know, select board to accept these things that have no dollar impact. Um this is something you need to do each fiscal year.
Yeah.
Uh what you see here is the red, I sent this to town council earlier, and this is town council's edit, so I just, I got it back to the set, but I haven't accepted them. So they are just minor verbiage sort of things that are the difference between essentially motions and substantive between what's in your habit and what's here. Um continuing on the on the consent agenda, um I tried to put M A S R things together with Land Use Committee and and Community Preservation Committee, um the five year land use program, something that we've already had a hearing on between Land Use Committee, CPC and and Select Board. Consent agenda for CPC for uh funding police station debt exclusion, uh something we've done every year. Community preservation revenues, um the first two, the first three ten percents are governed by statute. We have to do those and then how we split it for the rest, or if we want to do more for the first three. Those ten percents are floors. So this is again something we vote every year at those same percentages for at least the last two years. Uh so it's something that town meeting is is familiar with. Um article ten, so this has to do with the revision of the budget a little bit later. So when we voted the budget, so the uh select board and Fintom voted a budget of twenty four, nine eight four hundred fourteen thou- whatever whatever the number was as presented, and that included and anticipated twenty thousand dollar uh support of the town planner for affordable housing coordinator based upon conversations with, you know, CPC earlier. As we went through and I continued to to speak with the chair and as the board voted, they are funding the position at fifteen thousand dollars. Um so the position is sixty thousand dollars and change, so twenty thousand dollars would be, you know, roughly a third of the incumbent's time, and that seemed to be more than everybody thought that the incumbent would would spend on affordable housing. And a fifteen thousand dollar, which is more like a quarter of their time, so to speak, um is a more reasonable approach. So there is a five thousand dollar less of a subsidy, so to speak, um to the position and the vote uh at all, see later is to um to test it to.
Think um this position is potentially going to do more this fiscal year if we go ahead and create an affordable housing subcommittee to focus on afford, we haven't had that before, so I just want to keep an eye on what is that actuals look like over the course of the year going into next budget.
To track the the.
Yeah, because I think this, if we actually have a committee focused on affordable housing, this role is going to have
Might be a day.
Yeah, might be more than it's ever been before.
And so uh I think that's a good point. This, this does not
Right.
cast it in stone for fiscal twenty seven. This is the fiscal states, and this is what CPC voted, so this is what um to balance the general.
What's that? Yes, Carl, go ahead.
I think if you could scroll up to article six or seven, it's hard to tell from the markup, but I think there's a typo. Uh it says right now to see if the town vote to will transfer. I think that should be the town will vote to article eight. You have will, the word will in the wrong place.
Real time, real time adjustments. Thank you.
Okay, so I temporarily put back my GBRC hat on.
Um article eleven, um so this is something we talked about um with the HR coordinator earlier. So there was um a retiree who was um paying too much in premiums, uh was paying premiums on a plan which they were not receiving. Um and the town received those revenues, but only paid, they paid at a higher rate and we paid for a plan at a lower rate. So the delta of which has essentially fallen through to free cash as revenue to the town. This is owed back to the individual. Uh they paid for a family plan, only got the individual plan. We're only entitled to an individual plan. So this is roughly eighteen thousand dollars, which was collected over the last four fiscal years, um that the HR coordinator has now rectified and this person is paying the correct amount who we're paying. We've always been paying the correct amount, we've just been receiving too much revenues.
Certainly, well, this is reasonable.
So this is free cash. I have a little track machine, free cash. Yeah, so misclassified alarm. Oh sure, but everything here that's in, so it's four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in free cash. Everything that we kind of talked about in free cash leaves us with a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Um so I should talk about these things concurrently. So jumping ahead, um so uh stone ice removal deficit, ninety two thousand dollars. Uh ninety thousand of that roughly is attributable to salt. We had a lot of salt. Oh yeah, sorry. So misclassified water study expense. So in July of twenty twenty four, um there was a phase two water study expense that was charged to a grant. We had a ARPA fund for phase two water that I was closing up ARPA in December. I reached out to accounting, reached out to whatever concurrent, reached out to planning and said, hey, I have sixty two thousand five hundred dollars in this fund. Everything's paid, right? We don't have any outstanding invoices. Everybody said, no, everything's paid. Yeah, we're, we're all good. We're moving on to phase three. And then if a few weeks ago, two weeks ago, um accounting just shot me and said, we have a state grant that is sixty two thousand five hundred dollars deficit because a uh a expense was erroneously charged to this grant when it should have been charged to ARPA. That came out to me in March or April, um when ARPA had already been closed out. I took those funds, you know, select board had said to me, anything that's otherwise going to be back to the friends, go back, go back to the feds, you know, figure out a way. So I essentially moved general fund expenses in various capacities to uh ARPA general fund use by closing out this water fund, uh because if it wasn't used by December thirty first, it turned to a pocket, so to speak. Um really, this water fund should have been charged to that. So if we don't do this, if we don't appropriate free cash to pay this, we will have a grant deficit at six thirty twenty five and our free cash in the fall will be dinged by sixty two thousand.
That's fine. This is free cash, so sixty two, we were expecting to ding free cash.
And there is sixty two thousand dollars worth of general fund expenses in fiscal twenty five, which were moved to it up. So it is, it is really washed. It is uh linear or in the clean way we want to do it. But it it ends up, we look at this in November of twenty twenty five, everything ends up. But this was just, you know, again, and it was July of twenty twenty four. It was the, literally the first week of July, it wasn't town administrator, it wasn't executive assistant, got charged the wrong account. And I, I mean, I commend accounting to have sussed this out, um just a couple of months too late to make it clean. Um so and I would have said, said it's ninety two thousand dollars largely attributable or almost entirely attributable to salt. Uh we had a lot of those two inch, three inch things where you salt and then have to plow and then salt afterwards, uh which is kind of the most frustrating way to do it. Um municipalities across Massachusetts have seen, you know, unbelievably miles compared to the last handful of year. This was, you know, a version to the meat. Um one of the um more pressing capital items we've talked about has been garage doors for the fire station. Um so we fixed the voters on the fire station garage doors, but the garage doors themselves are in disrepair the um replacement. It's about sixty thousand dollars. Um article fifteen, this is something we do yearly as well. It's just three thousand five hundred dollars. Um this is matching grants for the police department. They get state grants throughout the year, um and we kind of immediate flexibility to have local. Article sixteen is the budget. So we actually go through, everything without an appropriation is out of order. All the consent agenda items through fifteen and the first non-consent agenda item is the budget. So it looks like it's late in the uh in the warrant, but anticipation is the first thing that has. Um so this is the budget here. Um seventeen is the water enterprise budget. Eighteen is the revolving fund. We talked, the only change is parks, which the board talked about at the last meeting. Um nineteen is the municipal subscriber curbside trash and recycling program. Um so this is, you're not appropriating money within the general fund, just appropriating money within, within the enterprise fund. So that, that's a budget item as well. Then we go into a um two consent agenda items, which are budget because we raise them on the levy, but happen each and every year. The update valuation account can be assessed or cyclical inspection account. So these are two things. Uh update valuation account is our year to year, where we pay our consultants to do year to year updates. And then cyclical inspection program is, um you know, we do a full tape measure, I believe every five years. Um and this sets aside roughly one fifth of what our, our costs are each year. Um which kind of smoothes it. Both from the consent agenda. And then we get into the school items. Um so we have articles twenty two, twenty three and twenty six. So article twenty two is um authorizing and so all three of these are authorizing and URSD to issue debt. This is not town debt, this is overlapping debt for the district. The charge to the town on each individual year will be proportionate to their student population at the underlying asset. So and for this article, and this isn't much regional high, so this will be a different, you know, calculation than what happens at if something, if there was debt specifically to come. And this is something that uh is incumbent upon MURSD's finance office to go through with their financial advisory chair and determine what is attributable to amended, what is attributable. I say all that to say it is a moving target and to say your yearly taxpayer impact down to a penny is not going to be possible to determine right now. We are in um a uh economic environment in which to say what the interest rate is going to be in three years and we ultimately borrow long term for these projects. It's impossible to try to um try to prognosticate. And then what the individual town's proportion of students going to be, well, I mean, easier to, easier to figure out what's going to be is is not exact either. Um and then the schedule by which we borrow and or by which the district borrows and, you know, when that, when that hits in a particular fiscal year. So the, the district has put together a great calculator online as to what the taxpayer impact would be. That calculator has been verified within the last two days by each town's assessing department that it is a fair and accurate representation of the uh of the assumptions that we have right now. But the real impact of it is yet to be uh, could be higher, could be lower. Um that's the reality of any sort of wiring. But I I just want to say that the the calculator online is, you know, verified by both assessors offices as having real and accurate.
And this is for assessed, assessed whole values.
So I, I think we have some guests here. Do you like to, like to talk about, like to talk about these articles?
Yes, if we're ready, I would love to invite you to join us at the table. And a uh a chance for us to hear from you directly. A, it's going to be a big question for the town. Uh so thank you so much for joining us. I know, I know you're all busy. So it's, it's great that you were able to join us. Um so I guess um I would ask, can you uh tell us a little bit about each of these uh articles? So maybe the group one to start?
Sure. This is my favorite thing to do.
Sure, this is my favorite thing to do and all I've been doing everywhere and I keep getting better and better every time. Is there a way to project any of the things or you want to see, it's, if not, it's fine, it is on, it is on the website, but you'd have to.
And I think actually it'd be useful.
Whatever you think's the easiest, but I've, I've found like when I'm able to just, when we talk about it and show a visual, it's, it's making it clear for people.
So people like on the recording as well, the website and how you can find this page, I know it's, it's quite helpful. I've been giving out the MURSD dot org site and saying, and then just look down for the, but we can demonstrate that.
I think you have.
Yeah.
You want to navigate.
Okay.
Great, thank you. If you could introduce yourselves, please, sorry, I guess.
All right, I will start, I'm Maureen Cohen, I'm the superintendent in Mendon Upton and I have my very supportive members of both towns here, so you can go.
So Bill Casey, president of the MUCP.
And what does MUCP stand for?
It's the Mendon Upton Community Project.
And he is a town of, resident of Upton, I'm a resident of Mendon, my name is Nicole Casalo, I'm the vice president of Mendon Upton Community Project.
Thank you so much for joining us.
And so when we, when you go to the website, I think it's important for people to know how to get the information. Anytime we get additional questions or things are, are building up, where I just keep adding to the website. You, you can get to it lots of places, when you go there, you just hit the button right there. I'm not gonna know how to use your computer, okay, all right. And it brings you to the capital project page. If you have a question, I'm gonna begin there. You click here, create a little chatbot, it's not perfect. But we test it out and when you have a question, you can put it in there. If it comes up with, oh, we're not sure on the answer, you know, let us know and we'll get the info and put it in. But that's, that's been really helpful as well for people to ask questions as we go. And that's built off a lot of the frequently asked questions we've had. Other things that you talked about, the tax impact here. And here's the calculator, something to know you, because it was confusing at first, you can't put any dollar signs or commas into it. It's just numbers and it, but it works.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, it says putting your home value, so this is the assessed value as opposed to something like a Zillow.
Correct.
So I think those are, those are different numbers.
Yeah.
Also, I encourage people to look up the assessed value. That's true.
A couple of other things we added, you know, we have the total project cost estimates are in this dropdown here. We added the presentations in here. So the presentation, the, this is a longer version of the presentation when we present at town meetings, we'll have a, a shorter one. But this has been helpful to put all the information up there, so when someone asks a question, you can access it. So that's what, we have another presentation going on in Upton right now and they're on it. And any, anything that is video that we have, we will put here. So we did present this publicly at our school committee meeting and that's been shared there. It was also already up on the web, but if people are looking for it. So I think it's just helpful for people to know and then you can navigate under each one for some of the details with the roof and the facilities and the fields and grounds projects. And I also added the school building authority overview. So you can, if you click in there, it'll tell you, if you're really curious about, you know, what that is, then we can go through that. Any questions on the navigation?
So the MSBA, the school building authority, so that is a reimbursable program for the roof question. So we, we've got three questions, we've got the roof, we've got the facilities, then we got the fields and grounds.
Yeah.
And so the MSBA portion is for the roof portion of the roof project, which is not the HVAC portion.
Yeah.
But it's a, a reimbursable part to the, so the overall authorization will be asking for the whole amount. And then NURSD expects something around four.
It's, yeah, it's fifty-two point two-six percent reimbursement and I can show you the, the slide quickly of that, but these are the three projects. And just something that I do think is important and I won't go through every slide unless you want me to. I don't know how much time you want, I can do this in fifteen minutes, twenty, half an hour. So you let me know how much time you want for me to highlight some things, but, yeah. That's fine.
I know I have been lucky enough to see this presentation a number of times. But I wanted to make sure that everybody on the board had an equal opportunity and also.
And it's been updated.
To the select board meeting online as well, I want to make sure that the information is, is out there.
That's perfect. What we find about this slide, are you able to see it fine where you are? Is it being, okay. Okay, great, what, what's helpful about this is just to have an understanding of how old our buildings are. If you start with Misco Hill, it was started to be built in nineteen fifty-eight and then it came on board in nineteen sixty. And then we had a renovation nineteen ninety-seven, so it is our oldest building. We've had the, a major renovation, you know, about halfway through and, you know, we look at this time span. Nipmuck then and nineteen ninety-six was built and then not too long after you had the two elementary schools that are newest buildings, but are newest buildings that are not new, right, yeah, exactly. And what was pointed out to me, which I think is really helpful, especially when you think of like your own house and your roof and, you know, I, I've been living in my house for a little over twenty years, the roof was put on right before I came in, thank goodness. I know I'm gonna need to have another roof, I know there are things that last about twenty to thirty years, like, like the roof. And we're looking at another made, more larger investment in our facilities. And we're looking at a time span of about this, you know, thirty years in between those larger investments. So that's been helpful for people to understand who don't know how old the buildings are. A couple of the things that have come up, I do put the timeline in the presentation so people aware. We have been working on this since I became superintendent, we've been very invested in getting a facilities assessment, which had ninety million worth of work, ranging from very critical to kind of in the future. We prioritize it down with our capital planning subcommittee, down to about approximately that thirty million mark and we'll show you how it's broken down. And then we were fortunate enough to time it where we had our past, you know, roof and buildings coming off for debt. And in twenty twenty-four, I believe it was the year that, that had ended and we knew that as we started to plan. And what was helpful is that MSBA accelerated repair program came back on board. They actually shut down for about a, a year or two after COVID and we were fortunate to apply, get into it and have every, all, all the stars aligned. Some people have asked, oh, well, have you just been working on it this last couple of years? But in fact, we've been talking about this for a decade. And when I went back into the records and it's my twelfth year in the district, so I have access myself to about twelve years of the records. We had an initial capital list, we've been working on projects, but in particular, some of the field work. And we've had design studies and, you know, they were all part of this before, but this isn't new. We've been talking about the need for field upgrades for over a decade. Something else that's come up for questions is, it, it, because we have to share what's failing or about to fail or what needs to be upgraded. And we get questions about it, well, aren't you maintaining? And we, we do an excellent job of maintaining, we have a very thorough maintenance plan that's been approved by the state. And we've had facility assessment, which I mentioned, the capital planning security, this is best practices. And we now incorporate all these elements into our best practices. When you look at the next two slides, we thought it would be helpful to give people an idea of examples of what we've invested in over the years. So we have Nipmuck, Misco, Memorial and Clough, obviously even more at the two older buildings. But some key ones have been the boilers, that, that was pretty, pretty major to replace the boilers. And, you know, you can see nice things like our, our gym floors have been done, but we have water treatment systems and on and on. So close to three million dollars has been spent over the last decade from operational funds to meet a lot of the maintenance and larger capital needs, but what we're presenting is larger than what we would be able to do, which is why we're coming forward.
I think that's an important point, Maureen, that, that money has come from your general appropriation and your operation.
Exactly.
This is not, that has not been the capital asked, but those are capital needs that are not within your kind of level service educational budget. This is, this, these are investments that you've made within your available resources.
Yeah, thank you. So the first project to talk about is the roof project, which essentially we, we have the shingles, we have the membrane roof and then with the air handlers and HVAC. What I try to emphasize, which I think is really important, is that if it has to pass at both towns and in both ballot, both elections for it to remain, that's a requirement for MSBA. So for accelerated repair program, they only do this ARP program every two years. So we, if we don't, if it doesn't go through, then we're out of the pipeline. And we still not, now we have a thirty to thirty-one year old, thirty-two, that's still leaking everywhere. And we're not gonna be able to get half of the reimbursement from the state and you never know what the funding is gonna be at the state. They've been great lately and they upped some of the funding, but you don't know where that's gonna land. So this definitely is our highest priority of everything because of that and being able to lower the tax burden on folks. I gathered some pictures, I like to tell the stories of, people say, well, what, why do we need the roof other than we know they tend to fail around thirty years? When I walk in the back door, there's always a bucket right there in the hallway, it's right next to this music room where we have kids and bands and music. And you can see the netting that collects the water and brings it down into a bucket in our classroom. The, I took the, on the side, the ceiling tile that I picture I put in there, that was just, last week I took that picture, that's in the main office, we have major flooding in there. But the story that I tell is when you walk through the social studies wing after a rainy day, I came around the corner, buckets, three buckets down the hall, water pouring through the vents, pouring. And it's, it's getting to a point where it's, it's really impactful. So those are the stories I tell of the why. Some people asked, I know in the past, like, why is it, it seems so much? You know, when I think of my own roof and I need to replace it, I think of how big my house is, you know, someone's house might be. I love this picture because I think it shows how big our roof actually is. We had some drone footage done that we were able to share a little bit more, but it, it is a pretty major undertaking.
Curious sort of how many times bigger it is than a sort of a typical, you know.
We do have that data somewhere that I have the footage, the square footage, I don't know off the top of my head, but it is in one of the documents or that you can ask that question.
You have both shingle and.
Yeah, so then you have this as well, this, you know, your roof, that's good. And then we have the HVAC systems and when I was giving a presentation earlier today, I was explaining, of course, you're not gonna go and, you know, take off and replace the roof and then put the old HVAC air, air handlers back on there, that, that are thirty years, almost thirty years old. That, that don't, wouldn't make any sense, but this HVAC part is not reimbursable. But most things, you know, will be. So the total roof project estimate that we have is a little over ten million minus reimbursement would be a little, you know, six point three-ish.
Just to clarify, at town meeting, each town will need to ask for, for the full amount, is that right? So it's for, because it will be for NURSD to take on that debt. So each town will have to ask for the ten million. But then with the explanation that we're not, it's not Mendon actually paying ten million.
Correct, yeah, I know, and that can, that can be confusing. And also, I know we received recently a question of why, if we're gonna get about half reimbursed, why do we have to borrow? But it is a, it is a requirement that we do that, that covers us i- in the towns if something, you know, went wrong. But we would make sure that, what was I gonna say, that, I like the analogy or metaphor. It was like, when you go to get a mortgage, you, you borrow more potentially of what you would need, but then you hope it comes in less. Our goal, and I can't say this enough to anyone watching, is to reduce the cost as much as possible in every way that we can. And I'll give a couple, this is one way that we're able to do that, but there are other examples I'll give throughout of how we're trying to get grant funding and, and looking at other options. But we still need these items and need that ability.
I, I think we're talking at town meeting about the MSBA portion of this, right? Like a two hundred and sixty million dollar MSBA project that sort of was approved with a full amount of, well, knowing that that's not the city. The city was my fault.
I'd be very surprised if so, I don't think.
Yeah.
People will be shocked that it would be a versatile.
Yeah, but I think there is confusion as to if we borrow this much, are you going to then keep spending all that much? But no, we, I cannot say enough, we want this to be as low as possible, that is, that is the goal. And of course, we need to, you know, get what we need to, yeah, no, exactly. So it's these short, short bands as it's needed and that, hopefully we could, that will come across.
Interesting to mention too, is we'll be competitively bid, right? I think what, what people don't may, may not know about the process is we're giving it a validated estimate based on what we are gathering from information. But once it goes to a competitive bid, then we can negotiate and get those numbers out. And that's like the, the missing piece that maybe, but not everybody's.
That's true, that's a really good point, yeah.
Trying to preempt a question, what do you necessarily have for contingency or escalation in that?
In that particular one?
We don't have a listing of contingency in this from what we got, we have it on the others, do we just have the design?
Yeah.
Contingency.
So, I mean, folks are gonna ask, what about, about inflation, without tariffs? Just general escalation even in a normal economic environment?
I know that Jay did say that we did put in a percentage for the tariffs and.
It was twenty, it was twenty-five percent, they're hearing that we need to put in related to the tariffs potentially. But I can also ask that specific question too of our, you know, we do have now like an OPM in design, inside the roof. And I can ask them that specifically.
So it says, we've got a, we anticipate an increase in cost due to twenty-five percent tariffs being instituted. May happen, may not happen. And then I want to say that I had a ten percent contingency in there, yeah. So that contingency number will come down once we get more relative bids and accurate numbers. But it's, yeah, a hundred percent design along the way, so we can reduce that and that's one way to reduce the money.
Prevalent for contingency, as we do with senior center, we have to go contingency.
Yeah.
That, that's not by your number, we expect to manage this too. Right. Back in.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there are unforeseen's that are out there, for example, what's in the ground, right? I mean, we don't know that, we can, we've made an educated guess based on the information we have in the surveys. But those contingency, that contingency bucket helps protect everybody from us coming back and saying, we need more money.
Yeah, I mean, ten percent for roofs.
Yeah, yeah, great, I'll jump over to facilities, that's all right. We have it organized around all four schools and then individual schools as we go through. We have a few items that we're asking for at our all four schools that we need upgrades. One is the building management system. Obviously, it's a little bit newer in Clough and Memorial, but not, you know, brand new. It's at Nipmuck and Misco where we have a pneumatic system that's difficult and definitely not energy efficient and definitely needs to be replaced. So what is a building management system and feel free to help me out, folks. I'm not usually the one who explains this, but I'm getting better. It is the brains of our air handling, right? And meeting and I'm, was presenting in a classroom today, working with a business class. I had the opportunity to talk to some students and it got so hot in the room. I said, I'm gonna tell the story and it, you know, it was like a hundred degrees in the room when they closed the door. Because when you have an old building management system, it's like having one thermostat, but for a building with hundreds and hundreds of rooms. When you have an efficient building management, and so they, everyone opens all the windows, right?
Reduces.
Because, I mean, you have to, because it's a thousand degrees, but you, it's not, it's not gonna be efficient, it's gonna cost more money when some of those things happen. And you're not able to manage all the room, so it's like the thermostat in your house, but we're applying it to a larger building, it's the brains of that. How do I do? Yeah. Right? Yeah.
So many meetings.
Yeah. Yeah.
Everybody's just like, ask, like, how these buildings are set up because they're slow.
Right.
You know, they're applying today's technology and design and they're saying, we can't do that.
Yeah, like, no, really, we can't, yeah, yeah.
But a good point with that is structurally, they're still good, you know, structurally it's still good, they just need upgrades.
So I, I think, I think that's a, it's a great kind of framework to say, you know, we're investing twelve million dollars, whatever, whatever this particular size ask is. I think that's a, it's a great kind of framework to say, you know, we're investing twelve million dollars, whatever this, whatever this particular size ask is into our schools. In lieu of a hundred and fifty million dollar new building, right?
Correct.
This is kind of smart investment in assets to continue the useful life. And to get the most out of what we already have, rather than trying to do. I've been on building commissions for, for new buildings and price required foot's insane to try to build a new building. Or even to do a full-on addition and renovation. So that this is investing and preserving capital assets for the district.
Um, something else for all four schools, and I have put in, asked for earmarks every year from our state legislators. We put in grants when they come up, uh, but to have a key card secure or a key fob security system. We still have the keys that have been used in these buildings for sixty to thirty, twenty-five years. And uh.
We're not ourselves trying to get a real inventory on what.
Yes.
We have.
Yeah. Yeah, and uh, what happens is, you know, when you have certain times or events at night in particular. You need to leave some of their doors open for them, people to come into certain parts of the building. You'd be able to shut it down, close it down, give coaches or people, like the swipe access, you'd be able to track it. If it was lost, you can replace it. I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with the technology, but we had a se- homeland security assessment done uh, a couple of years ago. And this is one of the topics to do to have a single point access in our buildings that we've been trying to get for the last couple of years. So uh, safety and security is a big part of it. Another is related to our paging timekeeping systems. This is an example of the ancient Misco paging system. Um, but what we found when I was talking at the high school, all of the larger spaces. You can't hear the paging systems in the large spaces, like the gyms and the lobbies and auditoriums very well. Um, you need that for emergency reasons, as I'm sure you can imagine. And just to understand how it works with the timekeeping, and it may not seem like a big deal. But you know, we are kept by our time in our buildings for schools, right? Uh, we reset everything recently at Nipmuck, and Nipmuck has its own time because we lose time with the system. It's always ends up being about five, six, seven minutes slower for some reason. And we're, and yeah, it's uh, not the actual time, we can reset and then it just loses time over time. If that's even the thing, I know physicists would say it's not, but anyways, alright. Uh, but that's uh, it's a lot to do those upgrades. Particularly at uh, Misco has some older wiring in there that would need to likely be replaced. Um, that would be a more significant project. Um, but at Nipmuck, we are looking to upgrade and update our data cabling. We did this at Misco and it was very effective. Um, I had a uh, conversation with the students of how often um, our wireless access, you know, points are, are going out. Part of that's related to this network, some of the network issues that we're having. Um, it goes out at least once a week, multiple times and impacting us. But everything is plugged in through the, our wiring cabling system and security camera sensors, door access, et cetera. And we, it's starting to fail, um, cause it's too old, it's from nineteen ninety-six and we need to upgrade it. That's in essence what, what we need to do. For the auditorium seats, looks like a beautiful picture on the left, but when you get really close, you're looking at furniture that lots of people have been sitting in. For thirty years, for a little under thirty years, and you know, of fabric that we clean as best as we can, but it's pretty, pretty worn down. That is a picture of a broken chair, there are thirty to fifty of them, we cannot replace them. You, if you see a chair like that, you'll get a leg workout when you're sitting in it, hold yourself up, cause it won't hold you up. And then when you walk in the main door, you see that giant rip in the middle of the carpet that keeps getting bigger and bigger every year. It wouldn't make sense to replace that carpet and not take care of the auditorium seats all at the same time. That's why we're looking at this being um, one large uh, renovation in that room. Um, similarly, we have the carpets and tiles in the classrooms, this is an example of the need for that in the Nipmuck classrooms. Um, at Misco, my favorite picture is this. I say that every time I present. Uh, this is the oil filled transformer from when they uh, put it in nineteen fifty-eight. We are certain that it has exceeded its twenty to thirty years lifespan. And it's a high risk of failure. We, it's linked to, and I'm not, I don't know that, hopefully, you may all, if you know about electricity unless you'll know more than me. But I'll give what I've been explaining. The power comes into Misco, this leads to the generator too, it comes in from Menden, and it comes in from Upton, cause we're right on the border. And with it, so the good news is when it's all coming in, it's working from there and coming in. And then we have our transformers here, and then we have our switchgear. Tell me if I'm getting this. If we turn it off, which sometimes you have to do like a reset in your systems, we are certain that it will not come back on, so we don't ever turn it off. Um, but we wanna add a generator, because there's no generator at Misco, so that's on the next slide here. Um, we couldn't put a new generator linked to an old switchgear that we can't turn off. Linked to these transformers that are ancient and may go at any point, even though they have been working. Um, it is, it's all connected, and that's why that's part of the project. We are working with National Grid, we'd be, they're gonna be able to help us out with the transformer part. But with the generator, for people to know when the power comes in, and even though we try to take care of all the um, the wires not being knocked down by the trees. It still happens every year on these really windy years that we've been having. And all it takes is it, it coming in from this way or this way, cause it's from two directions, and then we're out at Misco. I was talking to students and they said, yeah, it's, it's pitch black. I go, I know, I try to tell people, they said, yeah, we have to get, get sent home in the middle of the day. I go, I know, you cannot stay in the building, there's no water and it's pitch black. We have battery operated, but it's just not enough to really see throughout the building.
Do your, do your own building type generators?
Every other building does, yeah. And.
The flushers, big.
The what?
The bathrooms use, so basically send them home.
Yeah, right, yeah, the flushing, you can't flush. Speaking of bathrooms, uh, our bathroom fixtures were built and designed for elementary students. And we are now a middle school, five through eight, our eighth graders are like high schooler size, you know, young adults. And this is the number one civic action project that's brought forward from uh, students to come forward. And they say you need to take care of our bathrooms, we do the best that we can, we have done one. But the amount for actually replacing all of the fixtures and the piping that goes behind it related to it is actually a more significant project. Than um, smaller upgrades that you might imagine. And that's why that's in here as well, and it is very impactful. I know it's a bathroom, but all of our students, more than six hundred students are using those bathrooms every day. In the, when we had the renovation nineteen ninety-seven, most of the building um, had this renovation. But there's this back part of the building where it's mostly like art and music section, and that's where these lockers are. Completely rusted, hooks, missing hooks, don't open and close, need to be replaced. And that's why, um, it's like the most significant thing that you can see as students and, and it's our fifth graders that you. So they deserve better. Our flooring and carpets, uh, for carpets and tiles, twenty-seven years old, ripped. This is an example of some of the, you know, tiles that we had. We did use some of our Esser funds and grant funds to do some spaces, and that was great, and it looks brand new. It absolutely looks like a brand new classroom, a totally different feel with the bright um, carpets and uh, new tiles. We just couldn't do the whole building, so it's the rest of the building. And then finally, Memorial and uh, Clef, we have the door sealants, uh, window and door sealants, and the caulking has deteriorated. It's hard to see in the images, but they're just completely, you can imagine, they're just dried out. When I was over at Clef presenting at the P T O meeting the other night, we were just showing them the damage in the library. And all the water where it's, it's seeping in and it's, it's into the classrooms, and we just gotta, have to get ahead of that. Uh, curbs and sidewalks, uh, I have a better picture I'm gonna put in here that I just took this week. Because they're crumbling rapidly, particularly at Clef, when you are walking into Clef Elementary School. Um, because they're not granite, they get hit by buses, you have the salt and different things that uh, take, you take them out and they disintegrate. We do try to fix it, you know, with concrete and, you know, fixes, but there, it's all completely crumbling in the front, so it's a huge safety hazard.
So we should ask to replace it, service the plan to replace it with concrete or replace?
It, it's gonna be with concrete, the granite's too much, yeah. Wish we could, but um, it lasted twenty years, but maybe it lasts another twenty. But that's a good question, yeah. Um, the facilities project, the total cost estimate here, you have it broken up by the buildings. And then the designer O P M cost, it's a little over eleven million. And then in here, we do have it broken down um, for each of the schools and the cost. So for example, when I talked about trying to reduce costs wherever we can, if we get the key cards through something else. That, you know, that's forty-three, forty-nine, I know it's a smaller amount, but it adds up across all of it, that would be one. Um, if we're able to get some help um, related to ele- electrical, uh, then we can reduce that. We're looking at building management systems, um, uh, we're trying one out at Clef and working with the company and trying to get maybe reduced costs. We might be able to get at the new two, two newer buildings, it might not require as much like wiring, et cetera. Um, will be less, but we're, we're doing what we can. Um, so those are the four. I'll pause there before I go to the fun fields and grounds portion of the presentation.
Uh, how, so how will the cost be distributed for these projects? I know you, you mentioned with Nipmuck, because it's at Nipmuck, the, the um, the cost of town will be based on enrollment from the towns. Um, how does it work with this project where it's all four schools?
So there will be a complicated breakdown.
Very complicated, but, but we will figure it out. We have some smart people.
That, you know, cost associated, so when they'll set up their capital project fund on their general ledger. And there will be cost codes associated with various projects, and you'll be able to, you know, tell the debt and thus debt services associated with particular projects. So, um, you know, there'll be division codes for different schools, so they'll be able to say at Misco, we did this four million dollars. And it was fifty-five percent up in students, forty-five percent in student, so the debt associated with that, how many million dollars, the debt service gets split this way. Uh, it will likely be one debt issuance after you do your two short term, likely two short term and then long term stated up. Um, so then within that, there'll be a worksheet that kind of administratively, um, Jay, Byron, Director of Finance or.
Yep.
In, in the school.
In operations, he gets the, gets the facility.
Director of everything that.
Yeah.
Uh, and then um, both Joe, the town manager and Austin and I will kind of throw on a year to year basis. Uh, to say this is what's attributable to each, each.
Just wanna point out, this is not somebody's idea, this is actually a regional agreement specifies things to be done this way.
Yeah.
I know some of the risks.
Yeah, right, yes, yeah.
Be, require some things on the new grid, I guess, to do with that.
And so the, the, the um, the roof one is much easier, because it's a project, right?
Yeah.
While we're talking about both of these fields and grounds and then facilities, um, there are constituent pieces of it, which makes it a little bit more difficult. Uh, but it's compatible with the project.
No.
But really is proportionate based on the schools, just the, based on the population.
Great, that's a good question. Um, for fields and grounds, what we thought was helpful to, we um, broke it up into, you have Misco. And then you have Nipmuck backfields, Nipmuck frontfields. It's important to know it's impacting a, a number of fields, I think we're counting up, it's close to like six different uh, or more fields that would be impacted. We were counting them up today, that's been six, seven. Um, so if we begin, uh, and I'll have you jump in after too, but if we, at Misco, when you're looking here. This is, you're in the left field of the baseball field, and uh, that's where my son uh, played here a few years back. When he, from our, the town I live in, came here and stumbling upon uh, all of the divots and holes in this, in this field. We do not have irrigation, working irrigation here, which is part of it. It's highly compacted over all of the years of use. And over, I'm hearing stories around the softball field, which are kind of new stories for me too. That um, that there's kind of like where the mound is and the drop off and uneven and unsafe. Um, and also, we have had people, this is also like on the edge where field hockey plays, where flag football plays. Where soccer will be for youth, you know, there's, we have tons of organizations that are using this space, right? Beyond just our school. And as a result, I mean, we had like, there were families coming from another town, coming to see pictures of how bad our field hockey field was. They couldn't believe it, and they were coming in here and taking pictures to go report out to their, where they live about how bad and dangerous it is.
There have been towns that don't play us here, that we can only play on new fields.
Yeah. Um, so those are a couple of stories in this area, anything wanna add that I missed?
So basically, it's the side field, so it shares, there's a softball field on one side, a baseball field on the other side, and they share a multi-purpose field between. Multi-purpose field is used for all those things, including all the gym classes, which is, which is big, having a nice safe area for gym class to be out there.
Doesn't Nipmuck track, practice on?
Yeah.
That's not on this field, but.
Yeah, on the other, so this, this is just the field to the, if you're looking at the school to the, to the left of the school, up the hill and on that side. The one in the back has irrigation, it does grow good, does have a goose problem, but.
Yeah.
I've said this a few times, and I think it's the first time I heard that gym classes also use this field.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Gym class and cross-country.
Every, every, every day, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, for fields and grounds at Nipmuck, uh, just gonna do an overview. And then we'll show you that some of the larger pictures to explain the areas in the fields. Um, some of the field conditions that we're, we're, we're working on similar issues of the uneven terrain, divots and holes, safety issues for athletes and spectators. Um, something that's really resonated when I've given presentations is when I'm explaining the lack of accessibility of people getting to the fields. Or through the fields, when you see the upper right-hand corner where that flooding is, that goes all the way back to our backfield. And I'll show you the overview in a minute. Part of this project would be having paving and access, tell me if I'm getting it wrong, paving that would go to that.
To the end of that, so that.
Yeah.
Picture on the, the right is when you're coming out of the parking lot and you walk into it, so stores, trailers to the backfields. That always floods out, so that would get paved that all the way almost up to the field. Where that ends at the field is to a community walk-in path.
Yeah.
Around it, no stone dust path that can be used for maintenance purposes and then community walk-in, riding bikes.
So in addition to, and you know, I, I heard a story of like, there was an emergency that happened in one of the fields and years ago. And so the emergency vehicle had to come through, like straight through the middle. But um, it's hard to get quickly through because it's in such bad shape in this area, and that would make it safe. So when I hear emergency vehicles not being able to get to our backfields where we have um, spectators and our students. I think that's a high priority for safety and then accessibility. And also um, being able to have our grandparents and those with mobility issues having a, a, a better ease around. Um, and then you have the bonus of the walking path run, and I'll show you how big it will be. When we talk about not having lighting, um, this is really significant. I can't really name any schools or too many schools around that don't have lighting at this point somewhere. Um, it means that you can't use those fields, it's, it seems kind of simple, but you can't use them after the sun goes down, right? Unless you're renting and bringing in some lights and, and that's, you know, payment for groups that have to do that. When we host a week of lights at Nipmuck and we, it was all the youth sports that paid for. Um, I went to the football game on that Friday night, we were, we were talking, thousands of people there. I'm, I'm sad, I don't, I didn't count them, but, but felt like a thousand, right? And that was one night, one community event, one night. That can be every night, every Friday, every week, and where, where the community I live in, that's what it became. When we were able to bring in and have the lights, everyone in the town goes to these community events. And it was little kids in middle school and high school and say that.
Graduates.
And graduates coming back, right? And it's just what you do, and so a big part of this is like the ability of utilization, but also it's a community project. It really, and that's why I like that they call themselves a community project, because that's what we're trying to build for both, all of our students and our, and our groups. Um, so having lighting would be so significant. A lot of people don't know that we have this amazing track team with no track. I was talking to some students today, and when they practice their hurdles in the gym. Or in the cafeteria or wherever, a caf, right? It's not long enough for them to even practice the amount of hurdles that you would need to do in, you know, when, when in a meet, right? Um, they just had to go to Douglas the other day for a meet, cause we can never host a meet, we have to have every single meet at someone else's place. And sometimes some of those places, it's gonna cost us, right, in order to like rent out facilities. I was talking to the football players and lacrosse players, and they have to play every game when the fields get flooded and everything, they're playing in Northbridge. And I said, we don't really, no offense to Northbridge. And I said, we don't really, no offense to Northbridge, we love our, our neighbors, right? But we don't want to be playing our games in other towns because we are unable to play them here because um, we don't have a turf, artificial turf field. So uh, it, all of these stories are kind of building to the need, but when you have the no track, we also can never host events. And you can make a lot of money and a lot of revenue by hosting MIAA events, but we can't host any events as well. And that's also fun for the community to be able to do that. When we have the softball field, I'll show you, we're going to need to be able to turn that. Um. Can we confirm that the baseball field, we're working on moving back to the back?
So the baseball field will be in the same spot it is now, the line where it is, dug as where it is, but bring it home plate closer to the backstop. Giving you more room in the outfield and then, you know, less room. They can go from first to third on a pass ball.
So when we, when we go, does that? Just in the front field? Yeah, yeah. Uh, I mean, it would be great if we could have more, but.
We did, we did originally, when we started this ten years ago, we looked at like, you know, two fields and, you know.
Yeah.
A second turf field, you know, you know, this and that. And it's just like anything, it's costly.
We're keeping.
The big thing about, right, the big thing about from the front, so lighten the front field, you're closer to the whole electrical panel, which is right outside the gym. So now the cost is just running that across the street. If you go into the backfield, you're talking running thousands of feet to get no piping and everything out to the backfield.
But is there pre-work that can be done? So that might be secondary projects. And then part of this project, can you set it up for future light?
For something like that, I did that. One of my communities that I work in is when we did our access path, we did around the community access path, we actually buried conduit in the ground for future use. It's a great point. Conduit is probably cheap to do.
Fields are going to have higher use for clubs and the youth sports tonight. As you get in the fall, you're getting, you can practice up till eight o'clock if you have lighting. And that was always a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The field usage is really tight. It'd be good to fit as an outlet.
Yeah.
Yeah, add ultimate. It's a great idea. Just put that right in.
That's great.
This conduit is always going to put in. It's expected as we do it. Yeah.
I love it. So when you look at these fields, in case you're unfamiliar, if you're looking at the, the left, that's the baseball. It, you know, I wish it was a better, you could see how far away that backstop is and I'm a baseball mom and I just came from a baseball field when my son was playing. It is the furthest backstop I think I've ever seen in any baseball field that I've ever been to. So I just, it stands out. But we also, you can see, they were talking about how beat up the grass is and, you know, for, for the, it gets compacted over time and um, the softball field, we're going to turn, but where it hits the, um, it's, it's too short um for length where it hits, right?
Like tree lines.
Tree lines, yep.
Tree line in left field is only about a hundred and seventy, hundred eighty.
So it'd be, you know, pulled back and moved to the right to be able to accommodate that. Anything else on the baseball softball that I'm missing?
Um, yeah, so just basically the compact, a lot of the compaction out there is because we don't have other fields to play on. So when the football team, now, now Nipmuck has a football team. They didn't have a football team when the school was built. Uh, lacrosse teams weren't there when the school was built and they have other sports playing on the fields where sometimes they got rested in those seasons. They don't get rested anymore. They're constantly compacted and played on.
Is, I think about Misco, would it be compact? I mean, I thought I talked about just the way they were originally constructed. It's probably not ideal in terms of just the general development of those fields that didn't have irrigation. Second, am I wrong in saying a lot of the stuff that you're proposing is actually going to help with the maintenance and the upkeep?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So for example, Misco, we're going to have irrigation then, yeah, and some of the grading too, right?
Some of the grading up by the softball field because that actually blows most of the time across the baseball with the softball field. So if you look at the softball field, if you stand in the middle of the fields, you look at the softball field, it's like rising up to the backstop. So this, you know, everything is blown over there, dirt, everything. So it's built up over there. So it needs to be broomed and graded back down. But to your point, it's great because once there is an irrigation in there and that fertilizer plant, these are going to keep growing. Right now, when they keep being used all the time and there's no water to make them grow, they just get beat down and compacted.
I just signed up. The, the usage. Or recreational field development outside the school system, also level BBA, you can stay.
That is true. Yep, yep.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, neither town, yeah.
And uh, this is a, one of our more recent pictures now that we just had the drone footage done of our um, front field. And you can see, you know, the overuse, the, all the, all the students were talking about, you know, the overuse of some of the, the sections. We're going to say something?
Yeah, real quick. So if you just go up the middle of the field, you see that defined, you know, looks like burnt though. Basically, it's just crabgrass and you, that is grown in, that is the goal creases for the front of the soccer net. The next one up is lacrosse, girls' lacrosse and ten feet in front of that is boys' lacrosse. So on both sides, the middle of that field just gets beat. And it's literally used all spring. So you try to throw grass seed in it in the summer, which is kind of the worst time to be growing grass. And then you, right away, you're playing football and boys and girls, obviously soccer out there, as well as some youth plays out there some other times.
Yep.
I think one of the things that have come up is why not do um grass in that front field? Maybe we could speak to that, just that there's no time for it to grow and rest and so I don't know.
Yeah, you want to talk about that, the different, yeah. Why don't you do that now? The good, good point. Because everyone wants it, we, let's eat it out there.
All right, so yeah, one of the fields, one of, a lot of the questions we get are, okay, so if we do a track out front with lights out front, why can't we just grass it? Well, if we just grass it and you have the track and you have this and you're basically inviting everybody to want to play on that facility, you're going to get more use than this and you can't keep up with redoing the goal mouse and shutting it down. We don't have the ability to shut this field down and go play on this backfield. You know, that's, it's the wear and tear. It's just no time to recuperate. It's about a five hundred thousand dollar savings to go to natural grass like sawed in the fir- first gear to put it down, opposed to turf. But then you have the maintenance costs for those, you know, twelve to fifteen years that you're going to have your turf, which is minimal to pay, compared to your fertilizer, your watering, your moment twice a week. And then you slice seeding and aerating yearly and by seasons. You'll save money doing the turf. But you only have to do the turf maintenance every four to six weeks depending on um, usage. So if you get a lot of usage, then, you know, they're dropping, you know. You, you hate, you love to see, you can't have sunflower seeds on turf grass, but there is organizations that come from travel. So basically you have a sweeper, so you're sweeping up, you just pull it with the RGP card and you have a magnet that the kit's pins that come out from the track. They fall on the mat, you never, on the turf, you never see them, they go in, but when you pull the magnet over, they come right up. So that's the maintenance that you, you're really doing on that and then you're checking your areas that you beat in a, a natural grass field. You beat those same areas in a turf field, well, you go out and you fix them with a broom. So you're displacing anything that, you know, whatever surface you have under there and moving that back and filling that back in.
Year over year, the turf will um withstand what, how many years?
Oh, twelve to fifteen years.
Or you got in the same position you're at after you spend all that money and all that maintenance money. After twelve years, you're back in the same position that the compacted.
What we can do, what we can do on a, a comparison to that is there's another, there's another footage, there's another picture of the Jerome that has us and has BBT across the street.
Oh, yeah.
So in ten years, in ten years, BBT has redone their saw down the middle of their field twice in ten years and spent close to a million dollars. Our field with the Jerome, even the way it is, looks better. You know, it's just one of those things that it's just, you get beat down with grass.
Cost of equipment to maintain the turf.
Yep.
Is that, is that built into this project?
Yep, yep. So it's about fifteen thousand dollars to get the, the four pieces that you need. And then uh, yep, but the gator cart that the school already owns, you just hook right up to the back of that and it pulls a six-foot wide, you know, rake and brooms and everything.
Just curious, after the. Assuming that's not going to be down there.
Yep. So the replacement cost right now is around eight hundred and fifty thousand. So the good thing is, is when you're doing that replacement years down the road, some of that money can be set off by what your rentals and your, your fees are that you're collecting, that you can set aside to do your maintenance within your, your fees that you're collecting if you use the field. Because when you do stuff like pitcher in here and, and NEFC, the money that they get from youth sports that, that play and other groups that rent fields.
Is there time to?
Yeah, so we, we have um, you know, like facilities, fees that we have and separately, that's something we're looking at, like the appropriateness of the fees. But also we would have the ability to rent our fields, which isn't, we can really do, I mean, do. No, right. And we'd also, we, when we have our athletic account and you get the gate receipts that go in and that goes back into maintaining all of our fields. And so those are the two um, places, depending on how the money comes in, that then they're revolving and we're able to pay for things. Yeah. Uh, this right here is just the, the overview. Um, it would be in order to fit the track in there, we'd be turning um, the orientation and um, I don't know if you guys want to speak a little bit to that or not, but the blue around there is the walking path. I just go back to this here just to give you a sense of how big that walking path could be around the fields. Um, I think that's helpful to see all the fields and the distance.
It'd be a mile.
Yes, you're trying to get close to the line.
It's about a mile, okay.
The whole blue line.
Yeah. Um, we also, it's hard to see in here, but you have additional parking that would be closer to the fields. Cause for example, like when you're over um, here at baseball, it's, it's actually pretty far to park in, in um, to get over there. Um, that's something that we haven't really talked about yet as well. Um, the bleachers would be built in to the, the side. Um, just to go back to this picture. You can see that this is like a hill right here. The bleachers would be built in here. If you've ever been to Grafton is one, a local example, that's how they built it. It's higher up. And then when you walk in, it's pretty easy accessibility to come in um, and either watch, like I brought my mom and, you know, brought her in in a wheelchair and put her, and she's right at the top. She could see the football game, right? And uh, but you're able to kind of walk in um, down there. And then one thing, because the school wasn't built, when the school was built, we didn't have a football team. Not a lot of people know that. Why is that significant? It wasn't built for a football team, the field. We don't have a press box. I mean, we have these portable um, bleachers, which are fine, but you fit not enough people that go to these games that don't fit in there. And you can see where they're announcing from and all of that. So this is some of the safety issues that we have and what we're working with here to work around that.
So there are a number of pieces of this would be eligible for CPA funding. Um, so um, we've had extensive conversations with Upton as well. Um, and just on my way here, I had a phone call with the Upton Town Manager and we're trying to set up a, a meeting between uh, Community Preservation Committees of both towns to go through kind of in the next week or two. So we had a four-town meeting, line by line, what types of expenses would be eligible for CDA funding. Um, as you know, CPA funding for debt service is a year by year vote, according on the police station um, 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 subsidy, so to speak, um, from CPA just this year. Um, so the fiscal twenty twenty-six S would be very minimal for this sort of work. Um, as we talked about, it would be multiple years of short term before a long term debt, so it would change each year. Uh, but I think what's important is that Upton and Mendon and NU RSD have the same playbook we're working from. Say these are the CPA eligible pieces. And then for each community to say, this is our anticipated or this is our allowable amount up to X for debt service each year. Um, and then we can kind of back into what that means or reduce taxpayer impact um, each individual year. So. Importantly, the turf field itself is not CPA eligible, um, for everybody listening, but um many ancillary costs associated with recreation are. So we're working on developing a, a universal understanding of what's CPA eligible.
What CPA eligible is what we, but the committee agreed on approach to say, what, what are, based on what we see as our surcharge, does it mean that I'm going to use every year? How much do we want to allocate up to a certain amount to this project?
Because even if there's four million dollars worth of eligible debt and that equates to however many hundreds of thousands of dollars CPC may say we want to cap it.
Yeah, so we sort of have a band in mind. I think Anne was talking to Upton and I saw the same email that we're going to try to get together.
Twenty-eight this school.
If I could just say, just so everyone knows who will be listening, is if and when this is approved, that allows us to vote now and excessively seek donations, you know, selling bricks, fundraising and, and, you know, signage, naming rights, you know. That will alleviate a lot of that price.
I didn't say this at the multi-board meeting, but like, make sure you go through NU RSD's procurement about disposition. Ready for like naming rights and.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, closely working with them.
Um, and this, in the same vein as MSBA reimbursement, we we still have to issue, we still have to authorize, town still has to authorize the full weight of the debt agnostic to the fundraising and the CPA.
Um, but it isn't because we've been so far focusing on what it is, why we need it, you know, all the work we've done. We haven't spent a lot of time on some of the potential offsets, but I'm glad you brought that up because yeah, there is a commitment for fundraising that will take place when it is, whenever it is approved, different one. And uh, but we're not able to do that until we're moving forward, but they're ready to go. So thank you. Um, all three projects are in the summary here, so a total of a little bit more than thirty-four million minus the reimbursement. Um, so a little under thirty million at twenty-nine, eight, nine, five, seven, eight, nine. Um, we talked about tax impact and we showed you the calculator, but in our presentation, we break it up by roof, facilities and fields and grounds and then all projects. And when you look here, I think we were told the average, um, about average home is around six hundred and twenty thousand is what I heard in, in both towns. So when I've just been talking to people, kind of, you know, pointing that out and we understand um, that that range is, you know, it, it can go really high for the amount. There could, many people who might not be able to afford certain amounts. We, you know, have the option of the choices, but we're here to advocate for what we know is best for our schools and trying to be really diligent in our work with that and preparing for this.
So I'll talk about this a little bit more later. I'm writing a warrant report that kind of explains, warrant articles to folks. And the way I explain each individual question is, um, I have a per hundred thousand dollars of value. So, so folks can say, if I have a per hundred thousand dollar value, it's twenty bucks, whatever it is. And folks can say, okay, multiply that by five, that by six.
That's great. Um, you know, we're continuing to have presentations. I have to update the slide. I haven't done it yet. Um, but on our website, just to go to here, where did I put it? Right here. Let me see if I can make that smaller. Your computer?
We can see it up there.
That's right, I don't know. But anyways, um, I have that on the main, main page. Um, I know a question came up of, and I appreciate the opportunity to share here again tonight, which is something that keep, you can share and people can see. Um, we want to keep sharing. We are presenting anywhere we can. If people have questions, we'll do that. But we're going to host at Nipmuck uh, next Thursday at six-thirty. Uh, another information session would be similar to what we just did. Um, people can ask questions and we also, in that room, we're able to do like hybrid and Zoom and that will also be on YouTube. And then I'll add it to the website after. We're going to have a hearing before school committee where people can come and ask questions before our school committee on the twenty-eighth. Um, I do community meetings. I'm going to do one just over Zoom. Um, and essential it'll be, I can do a presentation again and then answering the questions that might come up. And then of course, we're trying to add everything to the website. So this I just sent out on Facebook and hopefully people will, will share so people are aware that we're doing a number of sessions and also presenting in, in both towns and answering questions as we go.
Similarly, on MU CP's website, we have the same links for FAKU's, um, links to the MU RSD website for people to check as well. If you'd like to visit there. Yep. Thank you. Yes, very, this was very helpful and lots of information. I think uh, some of it, I think a lot of it was updated since the multi-warrant meeting.
Oh, yeah. Also, a lot of changes since then, yep.
Yeah, so I still saw new things, so yeah, new information. Right, and as Jeremy mentioned, right, the, the um, Misco fields are used for gym, which I think is, is a useful data.
And same thing, of course, for our Nipmuck.
Right.
Field. And we didn't talk about, I was talking to kids about, you know, when you go out, just maybe it's wellness and walking, they walk our parking lots.
Aside.
Yeah. Yeah, and our track runs in hallways, they told me, hurdles and and parking lots and neighborhoods. Yeah, not great. No.
Any, any questions?
No.
Excellent.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for joining us. That would be interesting to hear this. Yeah, Nicole, I'll be in touch again if I like. So so the council on the active meeting was today. I was not able to do this justice, but I did share the website because it's so like, and there's so much information. Great website.
And I am going to be presenting, I think, on Monday.
Oh, good.
To move something around. Yeah, let's talk to Phil today. Okay. I hope you know.
Okay, absolutely. Good. And we'll be good to, yeah, good to talk to some of those communities.
Thanks, everyone. Very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we keep going, yeah.
So there were questions, 29, 23, 24, if you'd be sharing. There's another three, four questions. They were preparing a warrant of roof, facilities, fields and grounds.
You should be on vote on 23.
Twenty five, that was, that is the CPA vote to provide debt service subsidies in the NU RSD fields. Twenty six is the age restricted misuse, mixed use overlay district. So my daughter had sent me a number of point questions today about specifics on the parcels, which I'm working on, which I think will be important to, to be important to our meeting, submitted by the committee. Flood hazard overlay district. So we actually just got a letter about this from FEMA to make sure our essentially shorthand, make sure our law compliance apply would be NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Eligibility Program. So this was rewritten by our current Assistant Town Planner Dylan to comport with FEMA regulations.
There was an open hearing on Monday for both those items held by the planning board. So I think that was recorded and it's available if people want to get more information on it.
Okay, all right, is that mine? Twenty eight, to see if the town will vote to approve the creation of stabilization account for Blackstone Valley Regional Schools. So the rationale I found on this on a couple of occasions has been that it provides flexibility to to the district. It is recommended by their auditor and treasurer, has been approved by the town of Hopedale. And it allows for capital investment without the further request for appropriation from individual school districts or individual municipalities. I have asked, and I'm unclear about how it differs from E and D, the access and deficiency account. The initial rationale was that the district got a donation, a thing you made place for it. In my experience in school business, you create a gift fund associated with a particular building, which EBT is one building, so that seems to be able to, seem to be able to have that ability without the stabilization. Dr. Fitzpatrick is joining FinCom on Tuesday to discuss this further, but this did not come up. I meant to realize, but I found it interesting that this was passed by Hopedale in 2024 and did not come up at all while they were here presenting their budget just a few weeks ago. This has been something that the district been talking about. I will share a different screen for a moment. So I spoke with, with the constituent municipalities that make up EBT. Hopedale was the only one that passed it. Northbridge had rejected it in both 2024 and 2025, did not make it onto their warrant. And then a number of the communities here in Black, it will be on the warrant. It will be on the last and fourth, I haven't actually heard back from them, haven't heard back from them.
So more than Hopedale has been asked to put this on a warrant?
And now everybody's been asked, previous, from what I can tell from here, Northbridge and Hopedale were previously asked. This is the first time Mendon has been asked.
It seems, so they, they, so they're asking different towns, different views, but this year they're asking all the towns?
So now, so yes, this year, every town has been asked. Northbridge was asked last year and rejected it. It's now been again and FinCom has not.
Yeah, and when you say rejected it, they didn't put it on the warrant or failed it?
FinCom did not recommend it and then it failed.
Okay, so FinCom rejected it at town meeting and then it
So what I have here is there are one approved, six are, there is not institutional support for rubber in the air and these two, Blackstone level, Blackstone is now up here. It's on the, it's on the warrant. But Millville, I'm not, I'm not sure of. So this is where constituent communities are at. There were some strong language from some GAs about this.
So Mike, Mike, I think he had a question on this, like what happens if we don't put it on the warrant, but other towns do?
Yeah.
Will we, we ever get clarification whether or not we're, what that, does it make it easier for them to go?
It does not. They need seven. They need the affirmative. Seven. I, yeah, I asked if there were staff, so I received the regional agreement, which had a few amendments, the most recent which 1989. And I asked the district, has there been any amendments since 1989? And the answer I got back was they're fully complying with the regional agreement, which doesn't really answer the question. But as I counsel, we get the regional agreement, they still, they need a majority of constituent districts, not a majority of voting districts to
So next Tuesday, I mean, at the next FinCom meeting, he'll be presenting. I'm saying FinCom's going to weigh yea or nay in terms of their support of this. We as a board probably want to similar formal decision here on support. Whether that's, whether that's at that meeting, one of our meetings, we just, I want to make sure at least that one be affirmative, you know.
I'd like to watch that maybe because I don't feel like I understand it well enough.
Right, yeah. I agree. And we have, we have one more meeting before 28th, yeah, so.
So we should, if, should we post for the FinCom meeting in case we end up with a forum showing up?
I would ask to put, do you plan on showing up?
Generally, I've found that we probably, most of us will jump in. Maybe, maybe not the budget meeting. I'm thinking more like the warrant review meeting that Tom does. Maybe that's the one.
What's FinCom discussing Tuesday? They have voted the budget. They're going to do the same $5,000 refill of the budget allocation that was involved on tonight. What they are voting on is the recommendation of finance related warrants. Not, so they're not discussing the budget. And as a result, I have invited every department head or board that's associated with one of those articles to come join FinCom.
I'll watch the recording.
I was thinking Anne might watch the recording too.
Yeah, I've got a
Will you be attending?
Yes. Set seven o'clock. I'll be attending.
I will not attend to avoid a quorum, but if you notice there are, you know.
Yes, I'll be there. All right, so my takeaway from this is that, so we've got to finalize the warrants to print it. So inclusion on the warrant, yes, select board recommendation.
Right, yeah, I think maybe, maybe, I guess I'd be in favor of vote, actually formally voting on some of the articles. I mean, because I think, I think it would be useful. I, well, right, so, but I know like with, for example, the senior and community center project, we explicitly voted to support that.
I mean, in, in my previous tenure, we were flat out asked, what does the select board recommend on the floor? And we'd never voted, so we technically couldn't. We looked at each other and said, I think we did a quick vote.
So I think maybe on some of the things, maybe we can sort of lump some of them together and, but I think, I think it would be useful to actually have that vote.
Yeah, so I, so I, see. So I have the warrant report. And I'm winning the discovery. Soon as I have a vote for you. So I have some, yeah. Here's how you conduct yourself at a town meeting. And then it goes through and says, here's what the article is, here's who's sponsoring it. Here's what the article actually means, right? Because my, I said it 100 times. My first time living in a town and I got the warrant and I said I do this for a living and I have no idea what this language is actually trying to say. So I try to contextualize that and then I say, what's the select order, financing, recommendation? So things like this where I have the salaries, right, actually print what they are in here.
So we actually have to vote if given that context?
So I, my plan with this report is to print it, make it available, what town's like being a library, senior center, my office and whatever, and then have it online, be able to disseminate it. So I'm not going to get it, you know, bound and covered and, you know, nailed to everybody in town.
No, but, but to have a line that says select board, you know, in favor of, that denotes that we actually took a vote to say we're in favor.
So if you're asking that at the 23rd, I can
Well, we could, I think we could do it tonight. Like, I mean, it's, we've got a maybe we could like put a hold on, say, is it 21?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable voting to support that or not support that until we
But so, so, yeah, maybe I'm, I think it would be reasonable, given what's on the agenda for us to vote tonight then, Jeremy, and then, but we can
Yeah, you can vote everything but.
Yeah.
So does that help you at all though?
I can put a TBD and just post it online and not print it yet.
A TBD for that one, or I mean, you press it with a TBD, I mean.
For the 4/23, oh, see, 4/23. If you plan to vote it off. At least I wish someone would have heard or
Yeah.
the EBT proposal presentation.
Yeah, I haven't, so I mean, this would be the select board putting this on. And so it's sort of a strange idea that we're putting it on, but we don't necessarily support it. So I think it would be good to be clear about that in the discussion, I guess.
I was gonna say, I mean, in my mind, I can draw a distinction between, hey, I want to let the voters decide.
Yes, oh, yes.
Thinking of it, yeah, I don't want to be hiding anything.
Just we want to be clear, like about the process. This is
Would be a version of like joining a committee, which is like
Right. And maybe there is broad support for this in the community.
Can't imagine.
I'm a volunteer, which is how do I, how do I start right now? I mean, I guess there's a possibility to, but all right, an article sees no appropriation, no private, it would provide EBT with flexibility in the form of capital planning without direct or indirect oversight from constituent town governments.
Well said.
Which is all true, but not how EBT
I mean, we're getting Hopedale, Wilfrid.
All right, so we'll, we'll take, you all take a form vote on the 23rd on that and then I'll put as a TBD. Twenty nine, self engagement, brainy apparatus. So there's NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, Protection Association standard to which fire departments strive and hold themselves to replace their tanks from 15 years after manufacturer date. So this is like long lead time. We know we're going to have to replace it in, I think, five to six years right now is where we're at. So this is a one fifth and on a $250,000 cost. Imagine about a town against year three or year four, $250,000, $300,000 cost. Out here it's going to be a higher, when you're ratio to create a fund, this is essentially creating an internal earmark. We know this is coming, so we have to work this rather than borrowing.
Exactly. It's the smart thing to do.
Just highlight the capital plan when you write that little synopsis.
Well.
No, no, I, I'm all serious. I just want the people, there is a capital plan out there.
So chapter, article 30 is sponsored by the Conservation Commission and so we still have to chair on. The weapons protection bylaw, so the warrant guide that I've been talking about will include the redlined version of the bylaws. So folks can see what is being taken out, what is being added. Isabella, our conservation agent is writing a commentary for that piece. Anything else to add, Carl?
Nope, that's fine. I will be available to speak, to make the motion and then if necessary, Isabella would be able to speak to anything technical. We, we, we thought about adding substantive changes, but the Conservation Commission decided that it would be premature to do that until we have a thorough review of our regulations. And then we might come in a future town meeting where we've prepared, recommend what changes we would make with our regulations ahead of time to be triggered upon adoption of bylaw changes.
Thank you. And I, these red lines you're seeing here are council edits to the, to the warrant. We'll be working on motions once the warrant is finalized and I'll make sure to share that motion language a bit well ahead of time.
Yep.
And then these are the three bylaw changes we talked about earlier tonight. Electronic voting, town election day, engine language, and then the selected officers, I had a placeholder. So strike that.
Did, did we decide to strike it? I think we talked about leaving it in and passing it over. This for purposes of
Awareness.
And I will, I will put that as the select board recommendation as to pass up the articles for future discussion. And then article 35, this is what I asked you to open the warrant to add. And then DEP reached back out to us and said, the nature of our program does not require appropriation ahead of time. And I think I got it a day or a day and a half.
Absolutely.
So, and I messaged the board about it. So I apologize for that kind of back and forth, but you learned it as I learned it. So I left it in here just to strike it, to say, we talked about it, but it no longer requires us to be here.
But do we need, if we take it out of, do we have to open the warrant to renew it?
You do not have to open the warrant to state. I did. Brendan said he thought we didn't, so I confirmed we did.
And then so articles 32, 33 and 34, at least as their number, those would be select word. You know, that what it says now, okay.
Yeah, so they are select words as the kind of advisory nature that Tom and Tom Marlowe sponsored by.
It's an earlier version, so they did it.
Yes, I did. As I said, I don't think it's So this is, this is, this is the warrant. There's kind of nothing new on here from what we've talked about before. And so I, what we need by the 17th, which is before your final meeting, is a, or before your final meeting, before town meeting, is a finalized warrant to be able to post from the town clerk. So we have, we have the signature page tonight, so I can make sure E is on vote and all those sorts of things. But we would be looking for a vote to finalize the warrant tonight, so we can post it two weeks ahead. But we would be looking forward to vote to finalize the warrant, um, tonight, so we can post it to the exam.
And I'm just giving the, um, sponsoring body that.
And I would take out the C A, that was consented gender, that was a notation for this discussion. Part of the warrant report and part of what I'll go through with the town moderator is a, a. I said, this is what's on.
And you'll get a secure agreement from the moderator before the report.
Yeah. This is a, if you're holding the walks, we, we walked through with the town moderator, created. In my one Friday, since I created a document for that, this is like a beefed up version of that. Um, so we'll go through that with the town moderator before we.
Not specific to the warrant, but to the town meeting, um. Are we providing a business update before we get into the?
So we've got, uh, got some leading data here, um, about free cash and where we're at there. Uh, for my time in the shared report is what the Q three report looks like for us, and I'm just going to fold that into my. So warrant report will include the budget and then will include a kind of. So business. That's what I've been working on the last.
Okay. Ah, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, on the gender neutral language, uh, article, is there any, uh. Printed collateral that needs to be significantly changed? I remember back when we went from a Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Uh, I want to say there was like ten to fifteen thousand dollars worth of expenditures that needed to happen to reprint a whole bunch of materials. Uh, so I'm wondering, is there any financial impact related to that article?
I can consider one. With your question, there is all sorts of right stuff around town. I think the only things that would be impacted are. Forms that reference, uh, bylaw that we hand out, which we could phase out grandfather sorts of ways. I will puzzle that over with the committee. It's not something I hadn't considered. I. I can't think of one right now. But I can answer more affirmative answer.
Okay, yeah, if that's something you could look into for Tuesday, uh, that would be helpful.
Thanks for being helpful, Dave.
Given that question, Jeremy, would, given the budget that we. The voter, we voted on, would you see a ten or fifteen thousand dollar expense that might be generated by that warrant change being covered somewhere in? Select board expense line or something? Do you think we can, are we at risk is my question?
I can't think of things that reference bylaws for them.
Right.
That would require updating in ways that select word is, was. Or sorry, select men was, it was kind of plastered on things.
Right, so I mean, I appreciate the question. So my question is, I don't know where it could be, but if it's out there, do you feel our budget is such that we could probably? Mitigate exposure if we run into things?
Yeah, we have, yeah, so we, we've got these many expenses to come up with, if there is a few hundred or thousand dollars sorts of things. And you can, even in our licensing sorts of stuff, there is no. There's no direct references to bylaw, like quotation of bylaws, right? There wouldn't be a, a hint in them.
I think in the class, I think the class one, two, and three may have, like, a, a. Patch that we could just change. Like, if the bylaws change, we just replace it.
It's not like we have. Cardstock letterhead that says bylaw one, two, three, you know, he shall, in ways that we had stuff that said.
There might be stuff on the website, but that would not have the same sort of costs associated, that would be, that would be.
That refers to the bylaw document, in my mind, that's what that speaks.
Right, which I think we might have a copy or two printed, which we would need to. With any change. It's, it's an interesting question, now I'm really gonna think about it, but I, I, I don't think it would trigger anything. Changing. For the select, for the select, for the select men to select board, I can't, if we change it from mend into something else, or you need to, like.
I wonder, wonder if Ellen would have any thoughts about, like. Things that might.
That, that was my hand raising, that Ellen Agro would be the best person to ask about collateral. That says gender-specific language.
Sorry, that, that's our town clerk, or I said.
Town clerk, yes, Ellen Agro.
Yes. Didn't hear the whole thing. But yes, I agree.
That potentially is a broader, you'd say collateral is broader than what this is referring to. Right? Because the collateral is not going to reference the language of the bylaw. It'll reference the bylaw title.
Right, most of it.
So we want to expand that down the road to eliminate, use gender-neutral pronouns in our collateral that's bigger than this. And that's something operationally we can phase out and do over time.
So. Pending the, you know, I will write a plan which for this. Change number three, you know, change section three dash top ten to reflect the language, you know, of. Um, so pending that change, um, what we would be looking for, be able to finalize the warrant is to, to have select word vote to. To finalize the warrant as presented.
Be looking for motion.
I move to, I move to vote that the select board approve the warrant as presented.
I'll second.
Uh, discussion?
So this is not yea or nay in terms of support of the arguments themselves.
This is allowing us to print.
And we'll sign the.
That was my hesitation.
Yes. Right. Yeah, so, but that's a good point, right? This is not, uh, endorsing at all any of the contents therein, other than this is what is going to be printed as the warrant. As distributed.
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion? Alright, so we'll do a roll call vote. Rugo's eye.
Janelle.
Goderda.
Uter, I.
Great, alright, we have a warrant. And so, uh, do I understand right? You just said this, but tired. Uh, there is a signature sheet for us to sign tonight, though we should make sure to do that, those of us who are here. We will do that before we leave.
Do you need me to come by and sign it after, or is three okay?
Three is the stash toward requirement. Um, if you would like your signature on it before it goes out, you can stop by tomorrow and sign it.
Is that, when it, when's it go out?
So it needs to go out next week, so if everybody wants to come by and sign it, and you will come by and sign it, you can, you can wait.
The signatures actually don't, I, you mean, go out, like, to the residence?
So I, I think it gets posted, and if around town, a people, the signed warrant, I know gets posted outside the town. I believe at the senior center, I know, I saw somebody bring one in. So, yeah, a physical. Copy won't.
It gets posted, it gets posted on the seventeenth, so three signings tonight is, is necess, is necessary and sufficient, um. I would like if all five folks got to sign it, uh, before it got posted. So Jason, if you're available. Tomorrow or early next week, we won't, we won't post it until then, and I'll coordinate with Mike Maroney as well when he's back in town.
Alright, sounds good.
We need to vote tonight, because there's.
So. Alright, so, um, that was about the warrants. I believe we're ready to move on to eleven, the budget re-vote.
Yes, so, um, as the budget was voted, um, it was contemplated that there was a twenty thousand dollar contribution from CPA. To fund the Affordable Housing Coordinator slice of the full-time plan or. And that's how the budget was presented, with that twenty thousand dollars taken out. That was after initial discussions with the chair, not with a formal vote or anything. Um, so CPC, after I then, um, had conversations with the CPC chair. And CPC voted, they voted for a fifteen thousand dollar subsidy for the Affordable Housing Coordinator role. Um, and something touched on earlier this meeting, um, it's, um. Waits to roughly about a little less than a quarter of this person's, um, of, of the incumbent's, uh, salary. The, the feeling being that was roughly what we thought the role would contribute in fiscal twenty twenty six to affordable housing efforts. That does not end in the general fund or CPC in future years, from saying a greater portion of the role. Um, as we roll out a committee, roll out projects, um, in possible town parcels, um, so. The, the takeaway right now is that the budget was passed at twenty four million, four hundred forty one thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars with their ten cents, and that is not changing. When I'm asked, but the budget was voted as presented and discussed at that, at that meeting in March. Um, so what I'm asking now is a revote, um, the same bottom line number, but to, um, decrease. Um, the building maintenance line. Well, I guess. You can either decrease the building maintenance line or the fincom reserve line, um, by five thousand dollars. Um, and then increase the planning salary line by five thousand dollars. Um, and that's being. Again, the R six one, that doesn't matter.
Decrease of each twenty five hundred. That would be more complicated, but.
Not that complicated, from my point of view from the vote.
Well, I don't remember the amounts for, to those.
So the, the building maintenance line was increased by forty thousand dollars, so from thirty five up to seventy five. Um, and then we.
That was sort of our catch-all too, as we refined the budget.
Incomers' service increased from twenty one thousand to eighty three, seventy three thousand, sorry, seventy three. And changed, that was where we ended up putting it, okay, it was the last. Um, so. The cleanest, easiest would be to reduce building maintenance by five thousand dollars and then come back in the spring and say we have building projects we want to do at the end of the year. And you spend commerce or to that back to certain.
Yeah, exactly, do that. That's a new line item, so close to the seventy five, fincom, it likes on the line, so.
Plus, I give this the most likely.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's.
I like it.
Well, we guys heard from anywhere to regional, right? It's cleaner and, uh, more kind of. A transparent use to go from fincom reserve to somewhere else, rather than go from building reserve to, you know.
Yeah.
Contract and services.
So. You want a motion specifically for moving that, or just?
So, yeah, the mo. The, the motion I, I think casually, it would be, um. Uh, vote the budget, um, as mentioned, by reducing building maintenance by five thousand dollars and increasing planning salaries by five thousand.
Second.
The discussion? Is all in favor? Rugo's eye.
Janelle.
Goderda.
Uter, I.
Thank you, and just to reiterate that, it's budget control, but it's right, yes, yes.
So you ready for your town government's greater report?
Alright, so it's gonna be busy. So, uh, first of all, we talked about how bi-weekly payroll has been active since, uh, the first full pay period in January. Um, this Pat pay period was the first pay period which we use online time and attendance for everybody. Uh, had a couple of pickups, um, which across, you know, fifty odd employees is not unheard of. Um, HR, um, gen, and HR would be able to correct those in real time. Um, everybody got paid exactly what they should be and on time. Um, and now we're in the second iteration of that, and we smoothed those over. And now that we have kind of, we'll have some two iterations of this, we can see, you know, what works and what doesn't, and we can make changes kind of on the. Um, as we go forward. So it, um, just in this first iteration of payroll, um, HR said it cut down their time. Getting information and getting it into payroll in half, um, which was, was the idea. Um, the denting conservation restriction, uh, ongoing back and forth with council, um, currently sits with the nature conservatory, um, we're. On schedule, on our accelerated schedule, we're a little bit behind with one to be initially, um, but, um. Also not currently at core, it's with nature conservatory. Um, so I, I had a note out to get a, a further update on, so. Um, the, uh, the website, um, upgrade is ongoing, um, had a good meeting in the library this week about what their brand needs on to look like. Really excited, um. We can kind of pay for the premium additional department, so they're going to be within our hosting, but have their own. Site itself, so when you click on the library, it looks similar to the town, but all library stuff, all library at the time. Um, and they're, um, determining what the buttons, what navigation, what the color, what the font, all that sort of stuff is. But by it will be hosted within ours, rather than a work site. Um, and we're, Katie and I have a meeting bi-weekly with, um, uh, the team that's implementing our agenda and meeting module. Um, so. When we have, so tonight's meeting, right, when we have general bylaw review committee and, you know, community events and, you know, whatever other department wants to submit something. Rather than an email or a phone call to me, and then a note, and I'll post it, but I get to Katie, and if it's on there, they have a portal online, they say. Here's what I need, here's the action, here's the title, here's the action I need, here's the fiscal impact, here's the timing, here's the description, blah, blah, and it creates. A memo of sorts, um, and then that gets put into the agenda, you get the agenda, it's like on number two, it helps to, and it, it creates your packet together. And then Katie's able to go into that packet and record the vote as it happens, and then we have meetings and a database that has their report. So we want to say, when was the vote for Old South Box Road? Type that in, and it shows the December twelfth meeting that has the vote in this, where it's documented. So, um, really excited about that. For six thousand dollars to implement, you know, all hundred dollars a year, really excited about that. Speaking of, um, eleven Tres Road, Old South Box Road, um, we got the final deed today. Um, it's been sent over to the, so AMAZAR has it, and is working with the two folks and decided on their end. To remember, in the, in December, this board voted to ratify the ConCon's acceptance of it, ConCon accepted the donation. Um, so there's a signature sheet up there for you all to sign, um, ConCon is going to sign their meeting later this week, and Mazo is working on. The family signature, there's two signatures that they need. Um, I have volunteered to drive to the nursing home to where the one person is that needs to get assigned. Um, so, um, that, I'm hopeful that could be wrapped up by next week. Which is really exciting.
Yeah. Been a long time coming.
Yeah.
It was.
Before I.
The stock, right, right, yeah.
Um, had a great meeting last week with neighbor council and town hall meeting on. How to find, solidify what the facilities role would be, there was some discussion on what the impact bargaining responsibility for the town was. Um, and I believe that's been satisfied to the party's, um, satisfaction. There was, uh, we had a working group on what the senior tax workout program is for fiscal twenty twenty five. Um, were able to kind of unfreeze the program from where it was and get folks through the end of the year. And the charge to senior services director and the assessor is to present this board for fiscal twenty twenty six, the parameters. So, uh, there are some concerns with, um, the overall budget. Right now, the overall budget is fifteen thousand dollars, which is paid out of, it's called overlay, the assessor reserve for exemptions and appeals, abatements and exemption. So there's a, a request to decrease that budget, um, and then better define the parameters. So right now, there's kind of a waitlist of folks, so who, who gets it for the statement program? Should you churn every three years, same thing, be on a framework, or, so we're gonna go through some of the. Policy decisions that this board should make on how to define the programs, senior services director. Senior Services Director presented to you all for fiscal twenty twenty-six. Another goal of the Select Board for fiscal twenty-five was to objectively measure morale and culture around town, around employees, not just around town. Town employees. And, and then mentor that year-over-year and, you know, act upon it. So to that end, the first survey went out today to folks about satisfaction with their job, with the pay, how they describe morale. Their strongly feel about communication, department communication, town communication, town rules, that sort of stuff. So before this meeting, I think I had twelve responses out of the forty-six people I sent to. It was not, yeah. And then folks did have the opportunity to write at the end, this is, here's my name, this is who I am. I don't want a follow-up to discuss my answers to this.
Okay.
And up to fourteen, I had one person who wrote that, so I'll be scheduling that to discuss their answers. But I had one last answer. I'm not my answer. Four fifteen is FinCom, which we talked about. This is a form of view. We talked about participation that, about FinCom voting on the, on the financial. Next meeting, the twenty-third, I plan to have a Q three financial report, so. I talked about, they have a key to that permit revenues were looking, were looking good and they're still trending well above budget. A lot of our orderly state remittances are not yet posted for Q three, so I want to make sure we have that. But Q two, we're trying to book budget for, for a number and our insurance line was, was also trending positive through January, which was the last posting that I had. So generally good. Probably not two point six million dollars of, of free cash, but I'll have a better gauge on that as we close out Q three. And then last, last meeting, we talked about possible merger and the future of the Meteocomic Comercious and Communication Center and Southeast Mass, Met and Semare, the two regional dispatch. So part of what Met, what we're currently has been working on is a tower in Millville to increase communication availability. It's been something that's been multiple years in, in works and there's a groundbreaking next week. So it's a groundbreaking next week that she and Chris and I will be going to in chief, is available on Monday. So that's big news for Met and, and great for the reliability of communication to reach across. And then next week, I'll be out of the office Wednesday, Thursday, I'll be at the New England Government Finance Office Association Conference. Yeah, and then just working on the, the warrant report that I've been talking about. And so we'll be able to finalize that after, preliminarily finalize that after FinCom votes on Tuesday.
So I realized we didn't actually vote on supporting any articles. We talked about it, but we did not actually do that, so. You return, return to item ten on the agenda to actually, we wanted to do that so that you can have that in your sorry, what are you calling the?
Warrant report.
Warrant report.
I wanted to call the citizens guide to town meeting, that's something that the chair, which just tells you like, we have that. Moving your slide. To some might to warrant.
So, I mean, so do we want to vote on that? It's not, we, we talked about it. It would allow Jeremy to put some verbiage where, sorry, can you show us what it? You have something like variable or something like?
Yes, I have variable, so.
So the, the only article that I've heard discomfort about, well, I guess, okay, so there's wanting to pass over, we talked about that one for the, the bylaw review.
Yeah.
Thirty-one.
Right.
Right, so there's that one. And then, and then there's the BBT. So, and, and I don't, were there any other ones? I don't, those are the ones that jump out to me.
I don't have any of those, those are the two I, on my list.
Been the same though.
So then, yes.
I mean, and, and I want to call the three school particles up specifically just because, you know, by saying this, we're saying we're in support of the debt for all three.
Yeah.
So do you want to make a motion for, say, that one first or?
I, I mean, I'm okay with favoring everything but twenty-eight and thirty-three on the list I have there. I just want to make sure that when we're saying this, that we understand that we are actually.
That means that.
That's what that means.
That, yes.
And, and so it's very important, we said the list you have here, so we're twenty-eight, thirty-three, when this gets printed, BS five is going to be straight.
It's kind of the order.
Right. But, so as I hear what Mike Goddard is saying, is he's in favor of supporting everything on the article except for BBT stabilization and the bylaw review committee change to section three dot ten.
And the BBT stabilization may be pending.
Right.
Pending information.
We're confirming everyone else, everything else.
Okay. So would you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to to support all articles as presented aside from the BBT stabilization article, as I see this, article twenty-eight and the bylaw, general bylaw change, which is, as I see it, article thirty-three, which is the exclusion of section three dot ten.
Second.
Further discussion? Jason?
Nope.
Okay, so, all right, so all in favor? Who goes, I?
Should I?
Got it, Dan.
Uter, I.
Actually, I'd like to make a motion to pass over thirty-three on the floor.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Who goes, I?
Should I?
Got it, I.
Uter, I.
All right, and so then the only one that's remaining is just to be determined. BBT stabilization, top one. Okay. All right, so if we missed anything else, okay, so I think we are up to thirteen future agenda items. So I don't believe we'll have an MUCP presentation. Yeah, so I don't think we need to have them back for another presentation. I just wanted us to hear from them before we voted on supporting those articles, so that we can step on panels. Committee creations, right, these are revisiting some things that we've talked about, such as the Affordable Housing Committee, or there are other committees.
Yeah, making sure the Recreation Field Commission gets on air and the Replantation of the Ag Committee. This is stuff the board has talked about and really it's just, so Katie and I make sure we get on the agenda through, through town.
So committee creation in the sense of like putting people on those committees, yes, okay.
Is this different than the revitalization of the review of all committees, which was sort of an FY twenty-six?
Right, this, this is the more acute.
Yeah.
Question.
Okay. Licensing for AI analysis in teams, which I think Jason has been talking about.
Jason Long and I met on this as well, so it's ongoing and not yet.
So we'll be hearing from the bylaw review committee again with respect to records retention, am I reading that right?
Yeah, they've got, they've got a few, this will be delineated a bit more on things like purchasing and surplus threshold as well. So it's not just records retention, it's been the first, that's the one that I think went back on long. They met tonight, so I'll reach out and talk with Tom again, but they, they will have some more.
Okay, so.
This was, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
This was actually, Jason, he wanted to do that for the select board. Like there's a bylaw for the select board regarding records retention. So this one's separate.
So it's in, yeah, okay, so it's in the bylaws.
Yeah, there, there, it's a discussion we need to have as a board before we make any. You know, it's before we get the bylaw community, the review committee to review it, because we have to give them a direction as to where to go.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, that makes sense. And were you, are you talking about all records or digital records or, you know?
It's, that, that's what we need to talk about. It's not, that's not clear.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
Generally, the second of the Congress considers digital records a can to.
Right, so. Yeah, stay with, stay with. And then Capital Planning Committee, have they met yet?
They have, they're not, not as, not as constituted, so my, my goal would be to have at least a meeting before the, my chair meeting here, so we can present the committee.
Okay. Is there anything, Jeremy, you would like from the working group as part of your update, or do you have that covered? Any information from the capital side? Do you think you have that covered?
Yeah, I, I was supposed to take, you know, the working group's done a lot of work up until now. So, I mean, I, I really want to take a lot of, a lot of that information that was already existing and make sure we share it with.
I didn't want to help, that's really, I just wanted to know that.
I think the summarizing the prioritization stuff would be useful, which I, I'm not sure if that she had a summary tab to it, so saying, here's what folks went through in.
Stamp rank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be.
Some third tab.
So, yeah, it doesn't, so that, that would be kind of the press notification saying, here's what the group so far has identified as the most pressing. And then drill down into some of that, the costs associated.
Relative to each other, right? The prioritization, so it's not necessarily, so remember that time piece, like when is it acquired versus what its importance relative to other projects. So when you say most pressing, I'm not sure we might want to think about that.
Yeah, we did have it.
Right.
Any other agenda items? Yes.
I would. I don't know, we've talked about, what is the plan before we allocate supplemental funding for a pair year in a row? And I'd even want to see that go into three to five, you know, next three years, just given the information we have, we should have some sense of, because I'm getting questions now, when's my street getting done? Which is good news because they see work getting done, now they want to know where to be following, packing water. So we need to have some better semblance of what that starts to look like in terms of assume, I'd say, John, assume another two hundred and fifty for the third year, but carry that forward. And if we can do it, we can do it. If we can't, it changes your, your pathway, you know?
Yeah, it's great.
So, so you're, you're asking for having highway here.
Oh, yeah.
To check the presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
And then fire, just, you know, that's more of a longer term, but having Jason come back gives us that vision, you know?
Be, that would be great.
Yeah, Eileen and I had a great discussion with HR recently about what, what staffing both means to them and looks like going forward and having them talk to select work and the public about that would be really useful.
I think, yeah, more, more conversation need to be had about.
And building. The building. I can't hear people say, we need a new fire station yet.
Right.
Fire chief indicated, I don't. But we have heard it said in the past too, so I want to clarify that vision of the
Certainly.
Facilities, people, yeah.
Yeah, I, I've studied a lot. I was told a lot of times what John Dudley thought. It was like, no, it's important for me to talk to John Dudley and hear what John Dudley thinks. So, yeah, it's to hear what the fire, what the fire department, lots of the fire department thinks, it's important for you to hear from the fire.
Yes, sure. And another topic that came up is signs, right? You're, at some point, we're going to hear back about a proposal for a policy about road signs.
Yeah, so we were going to meet early last week and then I was out sick and then John Dudley was out at a conference and we haven't rescheduled that. But there'll be, we have had it on our agenda, I think for next week, for the police chief, the highways surveyor, myself to meet, come up with a procedure when someone wants a sign, how, how do we go about?
I don't know, we've heard, I, I've heard from two different people about stop signs, so I don't know.
They work in our least meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you do also, so I think, yeah, clarity will be really helpful there. I've had, yeah. Right, speaking of signs, right, that is a different. Speed limits, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And I, I'll also reiterate that we should keep following our policy creation policy. Which has a procedure for that.
I know, actually, there were some other policies, did we, where did we leave the? Did we finalize the, the financial policies that you were working on? I feel like that might still be a.
Yes.
That's open.
So I did get carried back from accounting. Just didn't share that, so. Yeah, that will that will be a, a facility, we'll be that, this is probably that, that will.
So personals, it's personal policy, is that?
Yeah, yeah, so that's in the works too, so that's been largely in HR's board, we've met, I think, twice now on it at different points where she brings things back to me and kind of say, give my, or give my respect and keep back. That's, that's in the works in the plan just fiscal twenty-five, but I can see where we're at.
Well, I mean, I think we, we set some fairly aggressive deliverables when we had our goal-setting meeting in the latter half of the fiscal year. So I think we also want to be cognizant of that when, in my mind, the near term is ATM. Let's get through to that.
Right.
It leaves us four weeks, six weeks to refocus and maybe reprioritize deliverables for the remainder of this year.
So you kind of, my office just see a lot of green letters that can be in different holes and then there's a couple of red checkmarks across them.
No, no, we're making progress, it's, it's going to be realistic, you know? I walked out of that meeting saying, that's aggressive. And I think we're moving, but I just want to be fair to.
Recently, we got together part of the slide, kind of the one, what do your friends do for a living? And it was really, it was really interesting, because no one really talks about that. So my last slide said, my performance evaluation is conducted in public by a board of politicians, by board life members, recorded and posted on YouTube. So, so I, I am cognizant of those goals, we are learning, we are learning. Now my friend, they're watching.
I have like performance evaluation part.
Well, you got my performance evaluation bingo. You can get those cards for your.
Thanks.
Okay. So we have, yeah, a few, a few things coming up on future agendas, I'm sure there will be more. So our next meeting, so we have one in two weeks, right, April twenty-third is just our regular Wednesday. Well, our regular but shifted Wednesday.
Right, I want to thank the board of health for moving upstairs.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you for that.
Stairs on the twenty-third, right?
So
Are we, we are?
We're, we're going to be up here, I talked to board of health and I said, we're, it goes, no, no, we'll, we'll take it downstairs.
And I want to thank the board of health.
Yeah. And graciously moved downstairs.
And then we have the annual town meeting, as you all know, just a second. And so just another note, it's not, it's not on the agenda, but right, the, for the town meeting, there will be the, the town report, which Katie has been working on along with Jeremy. And I know I still need to submit the letter from, from the board. So I know some years it's like signed by just the chair and some years it's by the whole board. So.
And we need to find the address.
Yeah.
Did, so I remember last year we all wrote. Should we do that again, or?
If you would like to, I was gonna, because I was considering consulting with you as vice chair. I have some thoughts, I was gonna, gonna skim through the, the, the big, the big book and see, like, make sure to capture some of the. The big book and see, like, make sure to capture some of the big town things.
I'm more than willing to defer to your direction on what will be going in.
And in, in writing the, I quote your, employee appreciation cards, I like. I have some verbiage. I'm like, ooh, we do really appreciate employees. So I think I would, you know, I was thinking that would. Make its way in to be publicly appreciative of our employees, but also mentioning things like the, the CMR. PC award that the town got last year. So any other sort of not specific to this elect would be town things. Because I see this letter as sort of an intro section to the book.
It is.
Yeah, so. That's, that's really about the summary, but it's the cover letter.
Yes. So anyhow, so. I will, yeah. So Katie needs that next week printed. So printed and or signed, I guess, signed by us, but we can do digital signatures probably. So like. Like PDF. Things that you could do.
Yeah, I did a Word document. That was. I'll be sick. I'll come in and sign it.
Oh.
So yeah, we, we want to be able to just finalize the document by the end of the day, next Thursday. Able to get it out.
Okay.
Yes, it's been on my to do list and then here we are. I think so. Anyhow, thank you for that. Meeting. So. Yeah. Be in touch. Yeah, do, do send. I'll, I'll probably check in. So I have another human to bounce it off without having a forum and then.
Do you plan on including some of the higher level goals we set for ourselves as a board? I know you said it wasn't because I think. The internal, it was a select doors that's done that in the past. I'd like to say this is what we set out to do in some frame, frame. And this is what we've. Done. So they get a sense of.
So this county.
Yeah.
It would be the flip chart. It was in your office. So I mean, I love me.
We can say that we've been continuing.
Work policy.
Right, continuing with our.
Capital planning. We did some things.
Yeah.
Well, no, we, we actually thought of things to do and actually executed against things.
Yeah, key stuff. Because why I'm. I can write this tonight. Key stuff. We appreciated employees.
Done.
Okay, so that's. For annual town meeting, but right, we need to get it done before. Basically, it will be a physical. It will be a physical, correct? Again, I know there was some discussion about how many to print. How many will be printed? I mean, is it, is the idea going to be to distribute at town meeting?
Yeah, we'll have.
As tradition?
Yeah, we'll have some at town meeting. So we'll have a. Town clerk's office, library, senior center.
And so that's, yeah, that, that, the. 2024 annual report. And then there will also be like a, the. The budget, the, the warrant report.
So that is, it was going, so the traditional FinCom book is going to be within the warrant report.
Okay.
The entire budget printed and feel better from FinCom. As the header, as the introductory to cover letter to the budget section of the. So I'm speaking with, I'm speaking with FinCom chair. Trying to determine who was responsible for FinCom book. He's like, it was always called that, but like. FinCom will put it together. It was kind of like more to me than. So to not, to get away from the misrepresentative title, but to allow FinCom to still. Auticipate on the financial, we're going to kind of combine all.
Maybe that makes sense. So that's probably what's in.
I asked FinCom before I made that.
Yeah.
Good, so. Alright, so. Yeah, so that's our next two meetings and then that's all I have. What?
No, I'm just ready to say it.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would entertain.
Have much to do today.
Second.
All in favor, Bruno's I.
Should I?
Got it, I.
Uter, I.
Hope you feel better, Jason.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Night.
Meeting adjourned.
Okay, fine.